May 2, 2023, city council meeting. We are going to get started. A couple council members still filtering in, but we have a pretty packed agenda today, so we don't want to get behind. Welcome to our meeting. These are public meetings, and you, the public, are welcome to join in person or by watching from the council's agenda page on Zoom, Facebook, SLC TV, or YouTube. We hope you'll continue to join in whatever manner you feel most comfortable. Right now, we're in a work session because of that, there is no public comment. But tonight at 7:00 PM, we will have a formal meeting, and you're welcome to share your comments with us there. We, of course, always welcome your feedback anytime by mail to PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 841145476, by email to council comments at slcgov.com, or via our 24-hour phone comment line, 801-535-7654. Anything that we receive that is related to items on our agenda are posted to our website, slcouncil.com, as well as shared with all council members. And that will bring us to our first agenda item, which is our usual updates from the administration. We have community outreach, an update on homelessness, and I think we will have an update from the Police Civilian Review Board, as well as on flooding today.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We just have a technical issue right now. Just waiting for confirmation if anybody's hearing the audio now.
Do I need to start over?
All right, if I could get confirmation from Scott, Thais, or DeeDee, if you can hear us, I've adjusted the Zoom audio setting.
Do I need to talk?
Just a confirmation, if I could get from Thais and DeeDee, if you could, or if anybody could unmute Scott, and just let us know.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. So are we good to proceed? Okay, there were just announcements, and now we're on our updates.
Excellent. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Katie Reiser. I'm the Special Projects and Volunteer Manager with the Mayor's Community Outreach Team, and I'm happy to be here and provide the community engagement updates today. First off, want to remind everyone, our webpage for residents to go and engage with the city, located at slc.gov/feedback. Next slide, please.
I think we just need one second while we get the slides up. All right, next slide, Scott.
We have a lot of updates for you this week, and to start things off, I want to share two programs that I'm personally involved with, Love Your Block and SLC Core. Westside residents have one more week to apply for a Love Your Block mini-grant. Applications will close May 10. It's been a busy month for Love Your Block, as they help host the Earth Day River Cleanup, conducted a day of service at Sherwood Park with the Salt Lake Bees, and completed the Glendale Community Learning Center Garden Improvement Project. A big thanks to all the volunteers, project leaders, and partners, in particular Home Depot, who brought these ideas to reality. Next week, Love Your Block will be welcoming staff from the Bloomberg Center for Public Innovation at John Hopkins University for a site visit here in Salt Lake City. Also want to provide an enormous thank you to all the Salt Lakers who showed up for one another this past month. On April 15, over 500 volunteers took part in emergency sandbagging efforts, during which over 30,000 sandbags were filled. The following weekend, another 1,200 volunteers took part in the Earth Day River Cleanup. During this, trees were planted, artwork installed, and thousands of pounds of trash and debris was removed from the river corridor. This effort was made possible through the support of dozens of partners and organizations, so a big thank you to everyone who showed up and supported that. Next slide, please. There are updates for two of our citywide plans. The Citywide Transportation Plan, previously known as the Transportation Master Plan, is in draft form and circulating internally, and the Housing SLC Plan was recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission on April 26. The Environmental Plan to remediate the concerns on the other side village land has been submitted by the Sustainability Team to the Division of Environmental Quality last week, and they expect to get an update from them in two or three weeks. Next slide. Two notable planning efforts have been recommended by the Planning Commission for adoption and are headed to the council. They are the Affordable Housing Incentives and the Sugar House Drive-Thru Text Amendments. The reorganization of the local historic district chapter, which does some clarifying of the process to historic district designations, as well as some chapter changes, is going to be at the Historic Landmark Commission on May 4, and the Planning Commission for a public hearing in June. Two engagements have begun. The Ballpark Station Area Zoning Map Amendments has started its 45-day engagement period, and the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance Update, which should promote more reuse of existing buildings and discourage demolition, has begun some initial scoping engagement and should start its 45-day engagement soon. Next slide. Some bus stop improvements with construction beginning on 400 South, and new pads are complete for 600 North and 100 North bus stops. Those are just waiting on UTA to complete amenities like shelters, benches, trashcans. In 2025, as you know, 2100 South is going to be reconstructed from 700 East to 1300 East, and the public announcement of the final design should be available in the middle of May. This project has its own website at 2100slc.org. The first phase of the Capitol Hill Calming Project is out for bid and should be back on May 10. The second phase will include various intersections, including the Quick Build Intersection at 600 North and 200 West that was built in 2021. The second phase will be constructed in 2024.
I think we lost the slides. Scott, are you still there?
I can pull them up, Mr. Chair. Give me one second.
We're back.
Yeah, we're on the transportation slide, Slide 6.
One more.
There we go. The Kensington Neighborhood Byway, a project to bring more safe routes for multi modes to District 5 and 6, has finalized their initial engagement and study reports. Concept plans should be available for public review in coming weeks. The 1,000 West Intersection and Traffic Calming Project has rebooted and started with some preliminary engineering and stakeholder coordination happening now. The 600 and 700 North Reconstruction Project Team has gotten a consultant design team under contract and is initiating a nine-month process to refine the vision for the corridor, which will involve community and stakeholder engagement. Finally, the Liveable Streets Program aims to implement neighborhood traffic calming in Salt Lake City at a citywide scale. The goal is to improve the overall safety, livability, and attractiveness of neighborhood streets. This is the first traffic calming program in the city since 2003. Small public meetings have started, and a second round will cast a wider net and encourage more people to participate and provide feedback around the needs of the community in regards to traffic calming. A survey is also live on the website in English and Spanish. Next slide. Finally, I want to remind folks of our outreach team's remaining office hours for the month of May. We hope folks will come by and chat with any of our liaisons at the following locations. That's it.
Thank you. What do we have next? Andrew?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Andrew.
Afternoon. As you can see, we've had some changes in the occupancy of the Resource Centers. The Resource Centers themselves, the 700 beds for the adults, is running at 97% capacity, give or take. The changes in the overflow, you can see the overall has been down to about 89%, mostly because they've been drawing down the number of beds, and they did close the winter overflow as of Monday morning this week. So a number of folks had to exit those facilities for the season. You can see the rapid intervention and encampment impact mitigation work that'll be going on, a lot of work along the river, obviously, in Folsom Corridor, and then reoccurring locations across city parks and various places in the city as well, and we have a regular schedule that we've shared with you all. The Resource Fair, you can see on the 12th at Library Square in the morning, and then there's also a new thing, the Block Party at Tofer Park, which is just east of the Geraldine Women's Resource Center. And in a joint work with the Central City Community Council, the HART team is helping them do that on the 13th, I believe. Yeah. And then Kayak Court will be on the 19th. However, due to the elevated levels of the Jordan River, they're not going to be on the river necessarily. They'll find an alternative way to do the outreach along the banks and other places. Are there any questions, Mr. Chair, about any of that?
Council members, Councilman Waldemaros.
An announcement, I think I said something last week for the Resource Fair and the Tofer Block Party. So District 4 usually has a table in there where we talk to people, but what we started to do is to get some clean clothes. So we took in donations, we sorted out, and then we give it out to people experiencing homelessness right there. So if anybody has extra clothes, and clean clothes, please bring them over to the third floor. If you guys want to volunteer, you can come over. I know I have volunteering groups already signed up for it, but it's always nice to be around and chat with everyone up there and ask the questions, what's happening in their lives. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Very helpful, very, very helpful. Next slide, please, is the...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Fowler.
Sorry, I just wanted to say that for Kayak Court, we will usually be on bikes, which is also very great, and we get to help our fellow people with bike issues sometimes. So just FYI.
This slide is about an update on the homeless housing grant, which the council approved several months ago for a number of projects who applied. And this is a quick update, since some changes have occurred since you approved that grant. First one is the Pointed Fair Park, which is at the western end of North Temple. It is opening this week, so on schedule, 94 units, really targeted towards seniors and veterans with some basic income. And they'll probably have some events as well that we haven't yet heard about the date on. The second one is Ville 1659, which is a former Ramada property on North Temple. That was a little more complex because of the ground lease and some other issues with it, so they have been slightly delayed. They are still moving forward with a new timeline, and I believe we've had information sent to the council about that. But that's also posted to our website, so the public can follow along, that if they're expecting it immediately, there's going to be some delay there. The third one was the Medically Vulnerable Project, which was outside of Salt Lake City in another city. They've also run into some complications about the siding, but they're still moving forward on that. They are working with the city for that project, and they anticipate that probably midsummer, they'll be able to open that up. But again, these are a bit more complex than the first one in some ways, as far as the land acquisition and working with other jurisdictions. So we did anticipate that there were some risks that'd be delayed, but delay is better than not doing them, and they're still on track to open up the units we need this year.
Councilmembers, any other questions? Was that your last slide, Andrew?
That is.
Great. And if I'm remembering correctly, a lot of those, were these the ones that were funded by, were these, did we fund these through ARPA or through?
Through the grant.
Through the grant.
Great. Yeah, through the grant, and they also had state funding as well.
For the 6 million that we allocated?
Each of the three got 2 million apiece, out of 6 million.
Well, better late than never, I guess. Glad that they're still going forward.
Are all of these within a timeframe, or do we need to do anything?
We're bringing that forward because the original contract was based on May 1 for opening up a majority of the units. There were contingencies in the contracts in case there are issues that came up that they could apply for extensions on them, but we'll have more discussions with you all about that as well.
Okay, great. Let's see, who's after you, Andrew? And is it Tanya? Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for giving us an opportunity to introduce Tanya Richardson, the Civilian Review Board Investigator, to the city council. I think this is Tanya's first time in front of you. As you probably remember, Rick Rasmussen, who was with the city for decades, I believe, retired last year, so Tanya's been with us for about a year, and I'll let her introduce herself more thoroughly. But also, I think, as you know, the Civilian Review Board is housed in HR in order to keep it separate from the police department, and Tanya can answer her questions about what the Civilian Review Board does, how they go about assessing investigations, and any other questions you have about the board as it currently sits.
Thanks, Rachel. Hi, Tanya, thanks for being with us today.
No problem. I was going to use yours.
Yeah, yeah. And then the slides are up there, and then you can just...
You have to tell them to advance the slides, because your computer doesn't control that.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me. Good afternoon, everyone. I haven't met you before. Thank you for having me. Pleasure to speak with you all and finally meet you. I'll just give you a little bit of my history, since I hadn't met you formally. I've been an investigator for 15 years. I started out with being a peace officer in the state of California for 10 years. The last three years, I was promoted to the Investigations Unit, and that's when I started my experience with investigating. From there, I moved to Georgia, and I was an investigator in Georgia with the Georgia Bureau of Investigation for the Medical Examiner's Office. Then my husband and I actually moved here. I was, well, actually, in Georgia, I was also with the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, and that's where I got my experience doing the civilian complaints for the police process review. And now we're here. I've been here about a year. I'm liking it, and it's nice. Thanks for having me. I love Utah so far. All righty, I'll go ahead and get started on here. Oh, thank you, appreciate that. Oh, yeah, I'll be here as long as you'll have me. Thank you. Okay, I'll just go ahead and give you guys the overview of the Police Civilian Review Board. For the people who aren't unaware, the Police Civilian Review Board is a volunteer board that provides independent civilian oversight on excessive use of force and other complaints regarding the Salt Lake City Police Department. Next slide. The board accepts all investigations, all cases involving police use of force, whether the victims file a complaint or not. The board automatically accepts allegations of discrimination, profiling, harassment, abuse of power, or any conduct that is egregious in nature. Next slide. We have the potential for a 21-member board right now. That was expanded in 2014. In 2020, it was expanded to the 21 members. Each council district has three positions available within the board. Their terms are three years, but under city code, a board member whose term has expired may continue to serve until a replacement board member is appointed. Next slide. Nomination by the mayor and final appointment by the city council is one of the requisites. Extensive background check to ensure that members may have access to Bureau of Criminal Investigations and other sensitive information is one. The ride-alongs with an officer of the Salt Lake City PD in each of the city's three precincts. Training by Salt Lake City PD Internal Affairs is required. Attendance at the Citizens Academy and meetings with community groups, those are the board member requirements to attend. Next slide. The planned improvements we have are as follows. We have background checks that are met commensurate with the board's work, which will streamline the onboarding process and reduce intimidation. Will allow onboarding requirements to be completed concurrently or after the board member is seated on the board. Improve public access to the PCRB reports by updating the PCRB website as soon as a report is ready to be publicly released. Updates to the PCRB website that reflect the onboarding process timeline and both board members and applicant status with the board. Next slide. And if anyone is interested in applying for the board, you can apply at the city website, the www.slcgov/boards. Next slide. And that is it. Okay, and I'm available for any questions you guys might have.
I had a quick question. You mentioned that the board will review cases whether or not a complaint was filed. What's an example of a way a case would reach the board if not by a complaint by the victim or the alleged victim?
A lot of times, we get internal reviews within the police department. Once it's presented to Internal Affairs, they share their information with me, and the investigation is picked up by my office then.
Is there a peer, like an anonymous peer system, where people can kind of provide tips to the CRB that may not come from, that would be anonymized?
They can, but typically, it's not anonymous. It can be, but typically, when people call and complain, they want you to know who they are and exactly what their complaint is about.
I see. Councilmembers, any other questions?
Mr. Chair. So obviously, this is a very good update. Thank you for being here. Obviously, we have read an article related to this board, and I've been communicating with this neighbor of mine that was waiting for this whole process to go through. And I see in the previous slide on the planned improvements that you guys mentioned some streamlining, so there is not that bottleneck, if you wish, on getting those applicants join the board. My question, I guess it will be more of a technical question, not necessarily so much about, so much about the administration, but how do we, how do we make sure that these people that got applied and went through the process, and they've been waiting for six months or so, can get that term back, or some sort of process, you know, that wasted term, if you wish, where they were waiting for this whole long process? It's not, I mean, let me rephrase. Obviously, today, I need more coffee, but one of the things I'm trying to say is, this volunteer wanted to join this board, went through the process, the administration saw it through, or they're helping this member go through. This person wants to contribute, right? And he's been sitting, waiting for months and months, so how do we make sure that this doesn't happen first in the future? I think that's how the streamlining that you guys mentioned is there, so that's great. But how do we fix this specific case? How do we help this individual contribute and be part of the board and give those six months back, if you wish? And I don't know if that's something that we need to change in ordinance, or there's some administrative way of solving this problem.
Right now, it appears to be an ordinance change, which is something we've been speaking about for months, pretty much since I got here. We realized there were some changes that could be made within the onboarding process to become one of the PCRB board members, and we have been working on that, and it's something that we're still continuing to work on. The people who came in this last group were actually, they had applied, but the process did take a little while. That's why we're focusing on the streamlining of how to make that process quicker. But to, from the start date, I believe is what you're referring to, when they're actually appointed, to when all the training's completed, and then they actually start serving as board members and voting on cases, that's something we do need to condense. Going back in time to backdate that is something that would have to be done through the ordinance change in the council.
Two parts, if I may.
Sure.
The, so the term starting dates, we can work with the city attorney's office on and get the council document pretty quickly, I think, to get that issue resolved. And then, I'm not clear on whether the, the streamlining that you have recommended is going to take any ordinance change, or if that can all be done administratively.
We believe it's going to be an ordinance change, simply because it will change the stated guidelines for their training that is in the ordinance.
Okay.
And like I said, that's something we've also been speaking about for quite a while.
Okay, so if, if there is a way to do it administratively, I have the sense that the council wants you to do that, and if you need it done through ordinance, we can work with you and the city attorney's office to do that quickly.
Oh, thank you very much. They'll definitely be happy about that. We've been meeting monthly to discuss that, so that we can get this done quicker and get the dates appropriate for when they actually start and are appointed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so Councilmember Wharton and then Dugan, I saw both hands. Go ahead.
I swear that this was part of what we addressed when we made changes to the ordinance back in 2020. And, but since that did seem like a long time ago, and, and many iterations of different things ago, maybe I'm misremembering, but I remember that this was a problem back then, the background check backlog, the ride-along stuff. And am I just misremembering that this was one of the things that we addressed, and maybe it just wasn't enough, or I'm looking at the rememberer in chief?
I'm not sure. It's possible that we accidentally made it worse. I don't know. We'll, we'll find out. Occasionally, we think we're doing something really good, and we recommend it to you, and then it's like, oops. So we'll find out.
Rachel, did you have a response to that?
Sure, just to add on to that, I think we can, we can definitely revisit any of the legislative intent that might not have gotten fully implemented when we did update the ordinance and expanded the membership in 2020. I do think there are some administrative things that we can do, and I think we can start doing those immediately in terms of the level of background check, and also, I think, some of the concurrent processes that we can do. And if there are other things that would be outside of that scope to, you know, run those concurrent processes administratively, we'll definitely be back. As Tanya said, we've been meeting with HR, attorney's office, mayor's office, et cetera, to try to dial in what we need to do to make this process easier, faster, less invasive.
Thank you. I mean, I really, I don't want to add to the pressure, but I had to read the article twice, because I was like, no, no, we, no, we made this better. We, we know this can't be right. And, and so if it is something that we did change that made it worse, and that's absolutely not, was not the intent, I'm saying this to the public, you know, we've known that this is a problem for a while, but I genuinely thought that we had made a lot of improvements, and so I was really surprised, too, to find this information out. And it's really very critically important to me that we do, you know, any, all of the changes that we can as fast as we can, because, yeah, for all the reasons that we've already covered, but thank you.
I would also just add, I apologize, but I would just add, too, that there's a great deal of, you know, additional information that you probably didn't read in the media report regarding how this board functions, the transparency around the board.
Yes.
The website is updated at this moment, and cases are uploaded as quickly as possible, and apologize for the lag over the last few months on that, too.
I appreciate that, and I should say that all of the comments that I just said are just related to the onboarding and the review turnaround time. Like, I still think that there are many, many changes that we made in the area of policing and oversight that I think have been hugely helpful, so I don't mean this to be a broad criticism. I'm talking really narrowly about the issue of onboarding people to the board.
Yes, and that actually is still the current issue, but there were a lot of changes made at that time to the actual ordinances on how the investigations are conducted, so you might have been kind of confused in the two.
Yeah. Well, I just don't, I don't mean to criticize those areas, because I think those are, have been vastly improved, and that's the feedback I'm getting, but I did think that this area, anyway. Yes, thank you.
No problem. You're very welcome. We'll get it done as quickly as we can.
Thank you. I'm glad to have you on board, too. Welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry that, you know, baptism by fire. Local government for you, so thank you.
That's what I'm here for. Unfortunately, you all were in budget meetings last year when I first got here, because I was trying to find a way to meet you all, and you were so busy.
Yeah.
And Tanya, thank you, and again, same thing. Welcome aboard, and welcome to, glad to have you here, and appreciate this work, because it is so vital and critical for our transparency and our improvements to the, how we enforce and also keep the city safe for residents. So appreciate that. On the whole onboarding, we have 14 board members, 21 is allowed. Are there anyone in the pipeline right now that are still, and do we? Are there anyone in the pipeline right now that are still, and do we, do we have seven in the pipeline or is it?
We're doing good. We have more than seven. We have 10 in the pipeline.
Oh, wonderful. That's great. I was wondering, I wasn't sure if we were also short of people in the pipeline. I'm glad we have those seven pipelines, getting them through quickly. Love to see that and appreciate the end for your work. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here. All right. Do we have more administrative updates?
I think we have a quick update from Laura Briefer on runoff.
Hi Laura.
Oh, and thank you so much. I thought I was going to use that one.
Council members, we are 15 minutes behind schedule, so I know everyone wants to ask 1,000 questions about floods. But just make sure you don't ask a question that's already answered.
And I can, I can be pretty high level and broad here just to say that we are continuing to monitor all of the hydrologic conditions and weather and getting expert advice from our great hydrologist, Brian McInerney, who's been wonderful to get up in the watersheds. We are taking a holistic look at the city. So, you know, right now of more, the more immediate concern is Immigration Creek, which peaked again last night. And the forecasted peak was actually higher than what we actually saw, but we are expecting another peak tonight and the following night. So we have a lot of crews that are out and about alongside county crews, cleaning the system, monitoring the system. Also, after Immigration Creek does its thing this week, we are also looking at Parley's Creek and City Creek very carefully and making sure that the debris basins above above Memory Grove are well maintained. And we also have equipment staged up there because, you know, maintaining those debris basins upstream is going to benefit everyone downstream from the east side of the valley to the west side of the valley because of the way that that system runs. City Creek is just starting to pick up flow, which is a good thing. We wanted to make sure that it has that measured flow. The weather that we're seeing right now looks really ideal with these warm days. And then we have a cooling off period through the weekend before it warms up again. So that's, that's really great. We do have sandbags. We have sandbag filling stations in Rosewood Park and Rotary Park in the city. And then of course, Salt Lake County Flood Control also operates some filling stations as well. I believe there's still some filled sandbags available at Rosewood Park. We'll go double check that. And then Salt Lake City Public Utilities has two campuses on the west side. Our Ballpark Neighborhood Campus as well as our Fifth South and Redwood Road Campus, where we have tens of thousands of sandbags that are filled and ready to deploy. Some of those sandbags are actually already in roll off trucks, so they can be quickly deployed should we need it. I'll also add, just on a system wide basis, we have, we have a lot of management of the system that, you know, we talk a lot about the detention basin at Sugar House Park right now, the importance of that and the detention basins at Rotary Glen and Wasatch Hollow. All of these detention basins are located upstream of the pinch points that are more downstream towards the Jordan River. And so this really is a system wide approach where it looks like we have a lot of activity on the east side of the valley, but really that activity is going to benefit everyone in the city. The the piped system for the four streams is looking very good. Last night, we made some operational changes to the pipe system to reduce pressure on the 1300 South Storm Drain as well as the 900 South Storm Drain. So there's a lot of flexibility in the system to manage in real time, the flows that we're seeing coming down. I should step back and also just let you know how hard all of our crews are working. Those operational changes are made in the middle of the night. That's when the peaks of the streams really occur. So we have stream teams that are made up of our Storm Drain Operations Team as well as assessment teams that are out there 24/7. And if you're a night owl, you will see them out looking at culverts and streams overnight. Jordan River right now looks great. The Jordan River is not expected to pose a concern in part because we have a lot of capacity, both in the river and the surplus canal. And the surplus canal will take the flows from the streams further south of us, like Big Cottonwood Creek, Little Cottonwood Creek and Mill Creek. So those haven't actually started running off in earnest yet. When those start contributing flows to the Jordan River, then we're going to see that surplus canal fill up more to maintain a steady flow in the Jordan River. But so far from a forecasted runoff and hydrological forecast, it looks like the capacity will be there. I always have to put in a caveat that we don't have control over the weather. And, you know, so much, so much is going to depend on how the weather unfolds right now. So that's sort of a high level overview. I know we're over time, so.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you so much for what your crews are doing.
Thank you. Also, I should thank all of the other city departments involved too. This is truly a citywide effort. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for keeping this on top of your priority list. We're going to move on to item number two, which is another informational update. This is an equity update and I think it's Chris Macias that will be presenting to us today. Hi, Chris.
Hello, and thank you for having me here today. I will also try to be brief in the interest of everyone's time. And our, oh, my slides are all perfect. So hello again. My name is Chris Macias. I am the Language Access Coordinator in the Mayor's Office in the DEI team. I attended this past week a conference in San Jose, California called Welcoming Interactive as part of the Welcoming America Network, which Salt Lake City is a member of. In this conference, the focus was about how to become an actual welcoming local government, specifically with the focus of immigrant inclusion. So we talked about a lot, and talked about and shared a lot of policies of how to be welcoming, how to create partnerships, how to create government leadership with intentionality of inclusivity. Also meaning how we, how we're being accessible to these communities and how do they have that equitable access. For example, one of the things I attended was called Language Access is Right and We Have Responsibilities. So as a local government, what are those responsibilities? What are some of those best practices? And how do we start to implement that as a whole? So it was really great to share all of these different ideas, different assessments, different budgets, different ways of screening. And because we are a member, we get plenty of different benefits. Next slide, please. So one of the reasons that we attended, aside from learning best practices and sharing with each other, was because Salt Lake City is in conversation to become welcoming certified. This is a national recognition that is a formal designation for cities and counties so that we can make sure that we have created policies that are inclusive, make sure that we have programs that reflect the values of our commitment to immigrant inclusion. This across the board provides a welcoming standard so that we can outreach to each other and all of the other welcoming certified local governments to see how we can support each other and also be unique in our own welcoming here in Salt Lake City. This designation could distinguish us in our local efforts to be competitive with other cities or local governments that do not have this and gain access to opportunities on a regional, national, and including global stage in partnership with many of the other cities that we collaborate with. Next slide, please. If we were to go through the whole process of seeking certification for welcoming, we would look at these following areas. They would help us assess our government and community leadership. How are we providing equitable access? Our civic engagement? How are we connecting communities? How are we involved with the education in Salt Lake City? Our economic development? And are we providing safe communities? And all of these will have definitions and a multitude of criteria underneath them that we will be looking at. Next slide, please. So if we're going to go through this process, once our conversations are going and once we provide a further debrief after my visit to San Jose last week, we're going to do a self-assessment that is provided by the Welcoming America Network. It's a series of questions and areas to look at to see if this is something we want to move forward with. It's going to include those areas from the previous slide. Once we complete a self-assessment, we will go through the actual application process. That is a six to 12 month process where we will be identifying not only our areas of inclusion, but also identifying our partners, our stakeholders in other community, including Salt Lake County, which is already a certified welcoming local government. Once we go through that application process and collect all of the information, the next step is to have Welcoming America provide an audit of Salt Lake City and they will provide us with a report. There is a star system of certification, a one star through a five star certification. One star is at no cost to us because we are already members of the Welcoming America Network and the cost increases as we go further with that. However, if selected and if certified, then the scholarship from Welcoming America comes back and essentially we will be reimbursed. If that's the case, they will also let us know where we actually qualify. So for example, if we go for a four star certification, but we only meet criteria for three, they will let us know. We can either reapply for three or work on those items that we need to for four, et cetera, et cetera. Not to get too technical, but after that, then we could actually receive certification. If that is the case, it is valid for four years. And then during that time, we can work on recertification if we'd like at any point. There is no particular deadline for this application process. I simply wanted to give the update about how I attended there, how the information was provided. And we want to start that just as soon as we can, given the conversation happening here. So that is basically the update.
Thanks, Chris. Council members, any questions on this? Just like in one or two sentences, aside from us being recognized for something that I think is in our values, what is the practical benefit of becoming a, what do you call it, welcoming certified city? Is it, is it something that like people immigrating to this country or refugees know about? And it helps attract people to our city or what, what do you, what would you see as the practical reasons?
Sure, good question. I think there's two parts to that. The first being how, as I mentioned, we can connect with other cities and other local governments and be able to share some resources in terms of creating inclusion policies. The example in my lens, of course, being the Language Access Coordinator, is that the Language Access Policy that we have in place was created in part with templates from other cities and then making it unique to us. So that's one example. On the other side, to your point of do folks as immigrants and refugees come into the city know about the certification? The plan is to include that when we say, no matter where you're from, make Salt Lake City your home because we have this standard already. And so hopefully with folks who already work in refugee communities especially, they can use this to essentially as a marketing tool as well to say, Salt Lake City does have these standards and here's why this is a place for you to come. So we hope to make that part of the strategy.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your work and the work of the entire equity team.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Chris. All right, we're moving on to item number three, which is a informational update about local historic district reports. We'll have Brian Fulmer from the Council Policy Staff introduce the item. And then it looks like we have Lex and Aiden from Planning Division here to present some more details.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a briefing about the proposed Laird Heights and Princeton Heights Local Historic Districts in the Yale Crest neighborhood. Lex and Aiden will discuss the proposed districts as well as historic district designation process and where we are in the process. And with that, I will turn it over to Lex and Aiden.
Thank you, Brian.
Bring up the presentation.
My name is Lex Tarkman with the Planning Division and this is my colleague, Aiden Lilly. And we both are entertaining applications that have been generated from the public for new local historic districts in the Yale Crest area. Next slide, please. Salt Lake City, as you know, has a robust historic preservation program. This is a map showing the local historic districts are kind of in the purple and the yellow are the national historic districts throughout the city. We are again down in the Yale Crest area looking at districts on Laird and Princeton. Next slide. This is a map of these proposed districts. In the blue, you have Harvard Heights. That's a, that's a district that has already been designated. In the purple is Aiden's application, the Princeton Local Historic District. And then the Laird Heights is in the kind of orange color there. Next slide. And this is just another map of the Laird Heights subdivision. Local Historic District application. Next slide. Again, it's in Yale Crest. Yale Crest has the highest concentration of period revival homes in Utah. There are 66 homes involved in this local historic districts. There are 68 properties. Two of those properties are just slivers of property, but they are within, located within that boundary. 63 of the 66 homes or 95% of those homes in the local historic district are considered contributing. So it is a intact block neighborhood that meets the city's criteria for those types of designations. Next slide.
Yes, so here's a map of the proposed Princeton Heights Local Historic District. It's located at approximately 1323 Princeton to 15 East along Princeton Avenue. Next slide, please. Similarly to Lex's, as you saw earlier, these are adjacent proposals. So located in the Yale Crest National Historic District. Within this proposal, there are 43 principal structures, 45 total parcels. But just 43 of those contain structures. 42 out of 43 of these properties are designated or currently listed as contributing to the National Local Historic District. So these are homes that have their historic significance intact and haven't been significantly altered. All this, all of the properties within this area are residentially zoned, so they're in the R17,000 district. Next slide, please.
We wanted to talk a little bit about the local historic designation process and what has happened up to this point and why we're here today. First of all, we hold a pre-application meeting with a citizen or a group of citizens who live in a neighborhood who are interested in this type of overlay district. And we, once that meeting occurs, we send out a notification letter to their proposed area, to all the owners in the area to let them know that somebody has interest in designating the local historic district. They have 90 days to collect enough signatures per code to actually initiate the application. And that, those numbers are 33% of the homeowners in any given area have to be on board in order to even initiate the application for consideration. That has happened in both of these cases. And so we've had an application submitted for both, both local historic districts. And once that happens, we send out a letter again to all of the owners within the proposed district to let them know that we have indeed received the application and we were going to start to process it. So that's up to step number three, or no, step number four. Step number five is why we're here today. It's the Planning Director's Report to the City Council. And if you, go to the next slide, please. The purpose of, really the purpose of this meeting today is to let you know, along with the report that we submitted, that the Planning Division has the capacity to administer the local historic districts as proposed. And that's in terms of staff and funding. And that, that's what the, the report you received indicates that we, for both of these districts, do have the staffing. We do have the funding to administer those districts. And basically, we're asking for your blessing to move these forward.
Is that an official blessing that needs to be given or is it just a, like, what exactly are we being asked to?
Is it a check in or is it, they need to vote to advance it?
They have to officially accept the report.
Okay.
But we do have to vote for, vote on, in a public or a formal meeting on accepting this report?
I think so.
I believe so. And it's been a long time since we've had, had one of these. Like, 2017 was the last time, so.
Well, I don't think we have a resolution.
We don't.
Okay, so we'll work with the attorney's office. Okay, so we'll work with the Attorney's Office.
Regarding the, the capacity, oh, Katie, yeah.
I just was thinking it would be good to look back and see how we did it in 2017 and confirm whether we're doing it the same way this time.
Thanks, Katie. Great, Steph, I'm sure can help us with that. Regarding the capacity, so great that there is the capacity in the Planning Division. Where does that, are, it, do the properties in a local historic district contribute to the funding to administer that, or that still just comes from the city's general fund?
It just comes from our regular budget, and about half of our staff do everything planning-related, but also specialize in anything preservation-related.
Half of our Planning Division staff?
Yeah, in varying degrees.
Works on, of the man-hours in the Planning Division each year, half of them are dedicated, what's, yeah, what?
They're qualified.
Are qualified to do that.
Yeah, they have the background.
And work on those applications.
Okay. It'd be great to see an idea of how much, like, actual, I don't know if maybe we need to wait till the ERP is done, but like, how much actual work is done on these versus other projects by the people that are qualified to do that? Okay. Was this your last slide?
No, it's not.
Okay, continue. If you want to go to the next one.
This was just additional information that Lex has really hit on, but through this process, like he said, this has been a, a resident of this district has initiated this application, and they've gathered 27 signatures from property owners. So what our process requires is 33% of property owner support. Right now, we're at about 60% that they've been able to collect. So this is just reiterating it. And then also, within our Planning Director's Report to you all, we do have some information where we state that each application that we see typically takes one to five hours of staff time. So we have some estimates on the amount of time that these take, and 89% of these are administratively approved, so not going to commissions, and typically, over half of these are just approved over the counter. So same day or very quick approvals that aren't taking very much staff time.
Mr. Chair.
Councilor Pui.
Quick question on this, since, you know, the word signature came, came, came to be, and collecting signatures from property owners. How do you verify that the signature is actually from the, the property owner?
Yes, so the process that we've used is the applicant, they have a 90-day period from when the application is gathered, or the first mailing is issued. They have 90 days to go from door to door and gather these signatures. So we ultimately don't ask for very much proof that this is the person. It's mostly on merit, and we check each parcel and who the ownership is for each parcel, and then align the printed name and the signature. So ultimately, there isn't a process of verifying each signature. It's on merit.
Sounds like Sunita Jensen has.
Just a, a quick item that addresses what you're asking about is that usually, because the process is so long and there's so much public engagement, they will get feedback if a property owner didn't sign, or if a spouse or partner signed, and there's a disagreement within the home. We've had that happen before, and then they need to rectify it amongst themselves as, is that property owner signing or not?
That helps, thank you.
It comes out in the wash.
Sure.
Yep.
I have a question on, this is, ultimately, will you guys also apply, or will they apply for a National Historic District designation at all, or is it going to stay local?
Yale Crest is already a National Historic District.
And so these ones are just being added to that overall?
Yes.
National and then local?
We currently have five local historic districts located within the bounds of the Yale Crest National Local Historic Districts, so this would be two additional, so a total of seven.
Okay. And, and, and the reason why I'm asking is because I, I think some of the, some of these neighborhoods are historic, they have access to other forms of funding, either for repairs or things, or even, I'm not sure, for infrastructure, if they want specific type of lighting that the city cannot provide, you know, outside, like on the public right-of-way, then they may be able to form and then get some money from elsewhere. Did I remember that correctly, or is that just a regular SAA?
That's a little, little, little mix, but you're close.
Very close, okay.
So the National Historic District is more of a honorary-type designation, and there are tax credits that you can receive for rehabilitation of structures within those districts. In terms of the light standards and things of that nature, I, that's kind of outside of the realm of this.
Okay, okay.
But the local historic district designation from the city, basically, any sort of exterior modifications that occur to a structure once it's in a district or once it's individually listed, requires a review, just to make sure that whatever sort of modifications are occurring are historically appropriate.
Thanks for that reminder.
A couple of questions on that. What about additions to the building and/or additional buildings constructed within the district? Do those also have to meet those historic standards? But can they be added?
Absolutely, yes.
And does the local historic district restrict use, or is it just exterior appearance?
It doesn't, they don't have authority to make decisions on use, just exterior building form.
So for instance, an affordable housing incentive program could still be applied, but the, the constructed structure, if it becomes a two-family dwelling, needs to be compatible with that? Could it become larger if it still fits within the zoning envelope? Just has to match that, or is there, how does, where does, do you get my question? Where does that overlay with the, the local historic district restrictions?
I mean, we would always want to make sure that any new building, even if the buildings to the side of it were two-story and we had a four-story, that building that was proposed, they would have to meet the standards for new construction. And, I mean, honestly, we would look at it on a case-by-case basis, but it would still absolutely be able to happen. Of course, we'd look at exterior materials and massing and bulk to make sure that we would put those design principles in place so that it would be compatible.
Kind of, kind of a misconception with historic districts is that you are preserving that district as it sits at this period of time, and you, that's not really the case. Additions, new construction, infill development, all of that stuff can happen. We're looking at more of the compatibility of how, how those things happen.
Okay.
Would it be fair, Mr. Chair, sorry?
I think we had a few, so, yeah, go ahead, I mean, Morton.
Thank you for all that. And part of it is that it's the outside facade, especially on the street side of the house, has to be compatible and can't really be structurally changed. You can change the inside of the house so much, but not so much the, the outside of the facade has to be compatible to that historic district.
Yeah.
That's important.
Just, and to add to that, and thank you for adding that clarification, like, I think if you look around the different historic districts, you can see how much diversity you can have in terms of housing types, especially in Capitol Hill, where, you know, you can have lots of, you know, a whole row of historic homes, and then a very, like, modern glass and, like, modern design, not, you know, typical of what you would see from other houses in the area. And then I think a lot of people get confused about what is in a national, or national requirements for historic tax credits versus what is required by the local ordinance. So sometimes if you want to get the tax credits, you know, your design that's internal needs to be in a certain way, or use certain approved materials if you want to get the money. But that might not be a requirement of, from us.
Yeah.
In the ordinance. So it just, you know, you, you need to, people need to look into it, because I think that the perception is that it's much more stringent than it is. And I say that, you know, living in an 1884 Victorian that is like five houses down from a brand-new metal and glass house, so.
Councilor Pui, last comment or question?
I think that Chris answered the question I had, because my, my mind went to, wouldn't it be fair that you're constraining use by, by requiring certain materials, right? And the historic materials are more expensive, so you are sort of affecting use by this requirement of keeping, you know, the historical structure cohesive, if you wish, with the original structure. So there is that, but, you know, this is a different part of town, too. So, so I think you answered my question. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Brian?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. During this meeting, I pulled up a message that I got from the Attorney's Office that says the city code does not require the council to accept the report, only that the report needs to be presented. And then also during the meeting, I received a message that back in 2018, it was reviewed at the work session, just like you're doing today, but there was no formal vote taken at that meeting or the formal meeting. Maybe you, if you would like, you could take a straw poll on it. I don't know if that's appropriate, or if you want to just leave it as is.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I think that I would like to let, let the process proceed. I think it's great, this is a neighborhood process, neighborhood-led process. They have over 60% on two neighborhoods that are historically significant, at 98% or plus. So I think we should allow the process to proceed. Again, back to the point about the signatures, I think that is all, and, you know, the, the willingness of the neighborhood also to participate is, it needs to be strong, and I think it is. So I think we should allow the process to proceed and continue on as, as through steps four through whatever it is, 10.
Is there another council, is there a point at which council does take formal action?
Yes.
Can we go back to that flow chart?
Yes.
And let us know what happens after step five?
Yes. So the next step after this will-
We're going back a few slides if we could, Scott, there.
The one.
Yes. So the next step is actually to hold a meeting with the property owners, an informational meeting, to share more information on this. They have received two mailings, like we previously stated, but that will better inform all property owners and create discussions. And then the final step of the process, after this, will go to both Planning Commission and the Historic Landmarks Commission, is city council vote. So you all will go to vote as the last step, which would adopt these local historic districts.
What is step eight?
So the public support ballot, ultimately, each property owner will receive a ballot where they will vote if they want this to be adopted, or if they do not want this to be adopted.
And that's not the final decision, that just informs our decision?
Yes, we will bring that information to you all, and then city council will take the vote.
Okay.
Essentially, what you're creating is an overlay zone. You're, you're creating another zoning district on top of-
And essentially, the process with the balloting, like, there is, there are a lot of mailers, there are a lot of heads-up to every property owner, meetings, where we just have straight-up Q and A on how our program runs, what we approve, what we don't approve, just so that all of these residents that may be in a local historic district get their, understand our program, understand the regulations, understand the process. And even if they signed on from the beginning to begin this process, which you have in front of you, write an application with more than 33%, at the end, if they are opposed to it, they can let you know that through their support ballot, after this robust, all of these robust mailers and engagement.
Councilor Pui.
Brief, since, you know, you mentioned that the transparency on these processes made by the amount of work that the city puts through by mailers and meetings and whatnot, is there any way to keep track of this, to have an idea of how much-ish effort and money we're putting on, into making this happen? I think that would be an important thing. I think it goes back to one of the questions earlier, you know, I think it is important to me to know if there is a way of tracking all of this. I think that would be important.
Yes, in the Director's Report, we've included estimates of what this would cost. So in the Director's Report, I, my district, Lex has several more parcels than I do, but we've estimated that the Princeton Heights petition will be approximately $3,296 for the 45 parcels. So that's our estimate for what this would look like to process.
And that's like mailers and, you know, your costs?
Yes, yes. So we include estimates for our supplies, including the mailers, posters, copies of the application, sign-in sheets, things like this.
Is there an application fee?
It's, there's no application fee.
I, and we've received this question offline. Is it safe to say there are some people interested in us looking with finance at the fully-loaded cost to process a district and to process-
And to operate a district?
Yeah, to, yeah, to process the-
Application.
Applications that come in for approval, like building permits do.
I would like that information.
Me too.
Sure. Probably less than a fireworks, but yes.
I, I think my, the reason for these questions is that I, I'm, we just had a presentation about Salt Lake City becoming a welcoming city and welcoming to diverse populations, and I'm worried that we, in time, there have been cities, and I'm not saying that necessarily is a Salt Lake City, but there have been cities that use local historic districts as a tool for exclusion, and I want to make sure that that is not our tool, that it's preserving historic architecture, but not preserving historic patterns of exclusionary zoning. And that's something that I, I think is a really hard balance to strike.
Yes, I would agree it is a hard balance to strike, but the beauties of cities across the world are some of the historic sites, and you're right about the exclusionary side of the house.
But history hasn't always been acceptable for all people.
Understand. I'm just thinking of the architectural self.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item, item number four on our-
Just to be clear, our marching orders are to move forward with these petitions. Yes? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear.
Thank you. Item number four is Budget Amendment Number Six for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. We have Ben Ludkey from Council Staff and Mary Beth Thompson also.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is the first briefing for Budget Amendment Number Six. The public hearing is scheduled for the formal meeting tonight. There are 29 proposed items. The total expenditures are slightly more than $50 million. Of that amount, $11.7 million would come from general fund balance. This would leave fund balance at 23.7%, which is $45 million above the 13% minimum target, so a healthy spot to be. The administration has requested two straw polls. I'll highlight those when we get to the two items, and this is expected to be the last general fund budget amendment for the fiscal year. Can we get the revenue table up on the screen? It's on page four of the staff report. Green items are above budget, red are below. You'll see that the licenses and building permits have slowed. They are 1.7 million below budget, but they are more than offset by increases from sales tax and interest income. Overall revenues are $17 million above budget. That's good news, but we are also seeing significant increases from inflation, and you'll see several items in this budget amendment that are asking for additional funding because of those costs. So revenues are up, but so are costs for existing services. Any questions on revenue before we go to individual items?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Councilor.
On the interest income, is that projected for the, for the near-term future, just because of the way the interest rates are? The interest income line?
Yeah, this is a projection based off of what the interest rates are for our investments.
And is it, do you think that's going to project further next year?
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
Thanks.
Quick question. Is there a little more, maybe a little more sentences behind the licenses and permits and what, why that is, you know, dipping a little bit? Is there a pattern there or something?
So the opposite of what Councilmember Dugan just spoke about, interest rates also affects building permits because buildings slows down because interest rates are higher. So yes, we get more interest, but we get less building permits because builders can't get construction loans at the cost that they were getting at previously.
Any other questions on the revenue side, councilmembers? Valdemaros?
So Mary Beth, do you foresee kind of like a similar pattern in the next, like, are you predicting maybe we start budgeting conservatively because the pattern is that the interest rates are not coming down anytime soon? You know, maybe we need to be cautious and so don't count with this $1.7 million from now till, I don't know, two, three years or whatever?
That's correct. So when you see the mayor's recommended budget,
Okay.
You will also see this decrease there.
Okay.
Now, remember that this is, this line item is licensing and permits. So that's the permit portion. When you see the mayor's recommended budget, you'll see the licensing portion as well, which is not down.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary Beth. Are we moving on to expenditures?
So that takes us to the individual items. We'll go to the table on page seven of the staff report. This is item A1, a request for $291,000 for additional funding to the cultural core, spread over six years. And the summary table will show that it's $50,000 in additional funding each year. And this is for year one through year five. And then in year six, it would be $41,000 of additional funding. The surplus fund for the cultural core is like the savings account. So in appropriation from previous years that was not spent, lapsed to the surplus fund. The county has a separate surplus fund for their cultural core expenditures. The county council has approved $50,000 of additional funding annually for six years. You'll see that as a separate line in the table. So with the additional funding from the city and the county, there would be $600,000 total in years one through five. It would slightly decrease in year six to $591,000, and in year seven, it would revert to the current level of funding, which is $500,000. The cultural core has had a flat budget of $500,000 since it started six years ago. This funding is being requested to continue the current level of service, knowing that those services cost more because of inflation. There's one policy question, whether the surplus fund should retain a positive balance to address unexpected costs. This item would fully spend all $291,000 in the city's surplus fund for the cultural core.
Councilmember, any question, councilmembers, any questions on A1? Okay. Let's move on.
Next is A2, and there are four separate items that are all related. And the staff report and my summary are just going to talk about all four of them together, because I think it's easier. These are items A2, A3, D1, and E3. All of these items are one-time additional funding for Advantage Services to continue providing the Mobile Clean Team at current service levels. The total increase is $533,000, and that's coming from three different funding sources. They're all one-time funds, so the annual budget would need new ongoing funding for the Mobile Clean Team to continue these services next fiscal year. The three funding sources are $300,000 in personnel vacancy savings in the Community and Neighborhoods Department. That's item A2. The second funding source is $160,000 by re-scoping funding from the state homeless shelter cities mitigation grant. And this is coming from three different sources: the police department, VOA, Volunteers of America, their street outreach, and the Housing Stability Division. All three of those add up to $160,000. They were for staffing. The funds must be returned to the state if they are not used this fiscal year. And all three of those agencies have said they're not able to use the funding for staffing because they have vacancies. The last funding source is $73,000 from unspent Operation Rio Grande funds. You may remember approving this funding in December as part of budget amendment number four. The Road Home did use $104,000 for the St. Vincent de Paul Winter Overflow Program, but that program has ended with the winter, and they were unable to fully use the funds. So there's $73,000 remaining. So $533,000 in additional funding, and it's in addition to the current base budget, which is the ongoing funding year-to-year. That's $802,000. So this is like a 60% increase over the ongoing funding. Two years ago, the council approved a one-time appropriation for the Mobile Clean Team, I think it was from the CARES Act. It was $760,000 for the Mobile Clean Team. So over that same time period, those one-time CARES Act fund dollars were used by Advantage Services to expand the clean team from focusing in the Rio Grande neighborhood to multiple other neighborhoods in the city. When those CARES Act dollars were fully expended, they continued to provide services in the expanded areas, and this resulted in them incurring expenses beyond the available budget this fiscal year. That's why the $533,000 is requested in a budget amendment. Since the council just approved CDBG at the last meeting, I thought it was worth noting, Advantage Services has received over a quarter million dollars from the city's CDBG funds over the last five years for this program, but they did not request funding in this cycle.
May I clarify something in the record? But Ben, are you, is there any implication that Advantage Services was supposed to cut back their service and not go into those other areas? I think the city expectation was that they would continue their service. They didn't misstep by?
No, they, my understanding is they're providing the expanded level of service that was requested.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The policy question is if the council would like any additional funding, any additional information about metrics on what the Mobile Clean Team is doing. We do have two metrics. There were 1,200 requests that have been completed so far this fiscal year, and the time from the complaint or the report being received to it being addressed and closed was four days in March.
Councilor Valdemaros?
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. I think, I think this was something that we started a long time ago to see if, how to like complement whatever our streets are doing, whoever's in charge of cleaning our streets regularly, like the regular basic cleanup that we do. And then we needed extra help for abandoned encampments or other types of bio-waste that was left over in certain streets or in any sidewalk. But I always had a question since the money that's been, has been going up and up and up. Like, what's the plan in terms of, is, are we at some point going to, to join these two services into one? I mean, combine the services into one? Is it like, this is a service that we're contracting out. So my question was always, do we need to contract out at this level, or is this something that we can start doing in-house so that we can save some funding? Because the city already does regular cleanup or the basic cleanup. So that maybe that's something for the administration. I'm not sure if it's, our goal is that the cities are clean no matter what, for, for unsheltered and shelter. Like, that's, that's a service that the city needs to provide. Now, how do we do it? Do we contract out, or do we combine our already existing cleanup crews for, you know, for the added service that we need to?
Yeah, unless someone from the administration wants to jump in, we'll ask and follow up with you with their response.
Because, I mean, thank you, but you know, that, because otherwise, you, we have to just budget $800,000 a year for, you know, for the additional cleanup. I mean, that's what we're supposed to do as a city, provide the services, right? And keep the streets clean and safe for everyone. So in terms of waste, and so that's something for us, I guess, to think about and discuss.
I don't personally see a way that we could not clean our streets.
Right. So this is, yeah, this is maybe the item that needs to be forever, you know?
I guess the way I see it is if that many, and we can talk about if the provider was efficient or whatever, all those things, but if that's how much it costs to clean our streets and we budgeted way less than that, then our budget was wrong, I guess is the way I see it. The streets, that, that $800,000 shouldn't seem optional, but that's my opinion. Councilor Puy?
I mean, I, I've seen the Advantage Services and, you know, around my neighborhood a lot, and I'm thankful for what they do, not gonna lie. I mean, it feels like it's needed, we need more. So this fits with, you know, the request. As far as metrics, though, and, you know, this is not addressing the discussion that you guys have about should we do it in-house, which it will be an interesting question for me as well, too. But something that I would like to know is on staffing, because if I remember right, Advantage Services hires people from our community that sometimes are, you know, trying to get, you know, a stable job for the first time, or, or they're, you know, in recovery, or, you know, so it's a great program. But staffing is a problem across the board. So I just want to make sure that we are not six months in and they couldn't spend the money because they couldn't hire enough people, and then we are on the same, you know, the impact on the streets, literally on the streets is not seen. So I wonder if there is a way of getting some metrics from them about how much are they paying, how much, how many openings they have, when are they planning to fill those openings and so forth, how many cleaning teams they have. And, and then that would be important for us to know if they either need to pay more money, or we need to give them more money, or, you know, all the combination of all of them. So, and as far as closing the requests, I do have opinions about what closing a request means, or at least what my neighbors are telling me and their frustration about when a ticket gets closed. But is there any way to document the pickup with a photo in the Salt Lake City mobile app? So we can upload a photo, and by we, I submit a fair amount of my own requests. And, but it would be nice. I think the visual from, from someone like me, from seeing a gigantic pile of junk to seeing that gigantic pile of junk gone, I think it will show, you know, that, you know, the city is at work. I mean, and we know it is. I mean, I testify for this. I mean, I know that everybody's doing their part, but I think the documenting will help people. And I don't know if there's a way of seeing if we can make that happen.
We'll ask the administration. There might be technical questions about, you know, whether the current system can do the, the photos out as well as receiving them with. We'll let you know. One thing to add, the, the Mobile Clean Team does do some work on private property for bio-waste removal only. So most of the work is on public property, but when it comes to bio-waste, it is available to private property.
Fee associated to that? I remember there was like a share fee or something like that. I remember.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
And then, may I, the, the policy basis for that was that, like with graffiti, where it's a societal issue, that's how this was considered as well, I think.
Yeah, and I think returning to Councilmember Valdemaros' point, it is a fee that feels really frustrating for us to have to, for us to have to pay at this magnitude because we're all familiar with the horror stories of what kind of biohazardous materials being picked up. I actually like the outsourcing of this to professionals who are specifically engaged around this material. The key to cutting this expense, to me, is to address the larger problems around it. This is a consequent fee that we're paying. And so if we can get to the heart of more effectively managing what we're seeing on the streets, then this is a consequent fee that goes away. And so I'm willing to dig down with you and work on that issue.
One more question, please. Can, do, are you, can you just give us a reminder of what these guys, so what the service is? Is it that somebody, like the hotline where you call and you said, hey, I need, like, if I'm, if I'm a, I'm a resident or business owner and I need help with bio-waste in my property or outside my property, how does that work?
Can we ask Michelle Hoon to come up?
Sure.
And she can speak instead?
I just want to refresh her because I can remember if it's a programmed cleanup or is it on-demand cleanup type of thing.
Hi, councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this really pleasant subject. So this is specific to the Mobile Clean Team, and what the Mobile Clean Team does is its SLC mobile request processing. So when you submit an SLC mobile request, when you call in to the Housing Stability Division, and that information comes to my team, we then turn that over to Advantage Services. We send Advantage Services out. We strive absolutely to do it same day if we can. If we can't, then our goal is to do it within 24 hours, though there is some gap there, I will say, on the weekends. That, that's the cost that we're talking about here.
On-demand, basically?
Yes.
Through the Salt Lake City mobile app?
Yes, on-demand. And to answer that question about the, the fee for the bio-subsidy, I believe that we're fully covering that cost now.
All right. Thank you.
Are we ready to move on to the next item? Let's do that.
That takes us to- Do we need to do a straw poll on that one?
Yes.
Oh.
It was requested.
Okay.
Do you have a straw poll?
No, yeah, I moved that we approve the funding for item A2.
Okay, the straw poll is to, it's not a motion, the straw poll is to approve this fund.
You wouldn't actually be approving it since it's a straw poll, but it helps to know that you support the item.
I moved that we support item A2.
Okay, everybody indicate your position on the straw poll. I see six, Councilmember Fowler is not with us right now. No, okay, so that's six, two, zero, with Councilmember Fowler absent.
Next is A4, a request to re-scope $823,000 in CIP for the Seven Canyons Fountain in Liberty Park. Back in fiscal year 2020, the council approved $857,000 to redevelop the Seven Canyons Fountain. It had been closed in 2017 in response to code and safety issues identified by the county health department. The $857,000 was meant to address those code issues and reopen the fountain as an interactive water feature. The request today would be re-scoping those funds to modify the fountain into a permanent dry artwork. The Arts Council would be involved. The dry artwork is expected to include specialty concrete and finishes to represent the seven symbolic creeks flowing from the mountains into the Jordan River. It would also have landscaping and lighting improvements with signage and handrails. The Public Lands Department has consulted with some of the original artists who worked on the fountain. There was an initial feasibility study looking at reopening the fountain, and it concluded that the costs were significantly higher than originally estimated and that the only option- and that the only option within the existing budget was to entirely decommission the artwork or turn it into a dry artwork. The department went out and did a community survey as well as collected feedback from the public through other channels. And the overwhelming response was not to decommission it, but to turn it into a dry artwork. They did a follow-up second feasibility study to see if it could be reopened using water at a much lower volume. And it looked at three different options, but they were all significantly higher than the existing budget. They estimated $2 million to $4 million to have some kind of water flowing through the fountain. So more than double the current budget. Looks like there's no questions on that one. Okay. The next two items, A5 and A6, these are both requests for parks impact fees for open space property acquisitions. The first $450,000 is for property acquisition related to a city park. The other is $300,000 as a local match to a state grant. Since these are property acquisitions, they're eligible to be discussed in a closed session. A7, this is a request to recapture $209,000 in one-time funding from the Emergency Solutions Grant authorized by the CARES Act. The funding is coming from two sources. It's $200,000 that was appropriated for the city's expenses to administer the program and $9,500 from the VOA's homeless outreach program. The deadline to spend these funds was extended by one year by the federal government to September 30th, 2023. So a little less than five months from now. The proposal is to award the $209,000 to Utah Community Action's Homeless Prevention Program. It provides emergency rent assistance. It pays for case managers' salaries as well as other housing assistance. The council originally awarded that program $1.2 million. They've fully spent it. And Utah Community Action said that they could use these additional $209,000 by the September deadline. The council did award funding to several other community service providers. All of them but one have said that they would not be able to use this additional funding. The one that hasn't said if they could or couldn't is Soap to Hope. They provided street outreach and they fully spent their $200,000 award. So the question for the council is, would you like the administration to check in with Soap to Hope if they could use some of this funding in the next five months? Or proceed with the recommendation that it go to emergency rental assistance through Utah Community Action? Also, Marzain want to weigh in on that question?
I know that Community Action does an amazing job, so I, you know, and they've been proving themselves. Their, you know, their programs are fantastic. So I I lean towards just supporting the recommendation as is.
Okay. Okay, sounds like we were gonna move forward with the recommendation. That takes us to A8, a request for $1.3 million from General Fund Balance for a roof replacement at the Steiner Aquatic Center. The current roof was installed in 2000. This is only half of the total project cost. The city and the county have an agreement to equally split the cost for capital projects, whether it's replacement or for new amenities. So the 1.38 million is the city's portion and the county will provide an equal amount. Is Steiner East or West? It's on Guardsman Way. Steiner East.
Yeah, they after rain, there's a lot of buckets out in different areas of the wreck center.
The project schedule anticipates construction over the summer and being completed in the fall.
Ben, so the roof replacement will be $2.6 million total and then we have to come up with 1.3 or is it 1.3 total? We have to come up with half of it?
It was the first. The total is about 2.7 million.
Okay.
1.3 is the city's contribution, half the cost.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
What's the lifespan on a commercial roof is 25 years feels like a nice, long time for a roof?
This one's 23 years. I've heard 20 is an average estimate, but it certainly depends on weather. They definitely don't get warranted longer than that, but there are also roofs that have lasted much longer than that.
And it's also, you know, coming from the manufacturing world, you know, these are flat roofs. They have a lot of leakage problems, big, big surface area. And so they fight over years, different small leaks. And then it just exacerbates and then you have to patch them and patch them and patch them. Finally you just say, yeah, redo it all.
This feels like completely rational maintenance to me.
Yes, yeah, because otherwise it becomes more of expensive if it allows roofs to leak. Then you have a lot of infrastructure cost problems, mold damages that then far exceed just replacing roof.
So is this coming to us in a budget amendment to be drawn out of a fund that we have set aside for reasonable maintenance like this that we maintain? Or we just haven't budgeted for this roof even with the realization that we're probably in the timeframe that we should be replacing it?
This is coming from General Fund Balance. It's not coming from a separate account specific for maintenance or facilities. You do see in CIP each year a request from the Facilities Division for ongoing maintenance. It's usually a very large amount, several million dollars, and so it typically only gets a couple million dollars of funding. So there is an amount each year in CIP for ongoing building maintenance and repairs. But this is coming from General Fund Balance.
And but could it come from CIP or is that this year CIP is gone?
So it wasn't an application, so it wouldn't be in CIP for this cycle. And I'm guessing if it wasn't approved this year, that there's the risk of increased costs from potential leaks or damage related to the roof not working.
And do we know why they didn't apply through the CIP funding instead of coming from the general fund? It's a very precious fund.
It's because there's a contract between the city and the county. I think Mary Beth has more.
Well, what I would say is CIP funding, the majority of CIP funding and the majority of, they're both general fund. It's all, it all is the same bucket of money when you're looking at it anyway. I think that what happened was the county came forward with their funding and so they asked the city to come forward with their funding for the roof as well. Yes, planning is probably a good thing. It wasn't done on this. We are working that, working on planning for infrastructure needs.
Thanks. I love to be as proactive on these sorts of things that we're not in a reactive position.
And I just wanted to say it isn't embedded in our system yet to look at the life, the practical life of assets and then schedule their replacement. We're on a different system of crisis because our CIP funds are not adequate, just as a government.
Mr. Chair, quickly, I I remember in the county, they track their deferred maintenance and they have this gigantic amount of deferred maintenance the county does. The, just a random general question, how was the decision to do this roof? Because it was triggered by the county deciding to pay for their half and then decided, okay, let's pay for our half.
Yeah, I believe so, but let me bring Jorge up and he can answer this question better than myself.
When I want to get to, I guess, the overall question I have is, are there other roofs? And, you know, that need to be replaced very quickly? Is the Steiner, you know, West, how is that roof looking like? Or how are the other facilities looking like? Are there other urgencies? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for the question. This this last question is whether or not this roof really needs to be replaced in compared to other roofs. Yeah, so definitely, this roof needs to be replaced. It is past their useful life. As Councilmember Dugan mentioned, we have patched that roof way too many times. And so it is, it needs to be replaced. Now, the second part of the question as to whether or not we know the condition of other roofs, we do. And we prioritize those as as safety concerns, right? As Ben mentioned earlier, we have a good inventory in our asset management software that tells us what is the maintenance, the capital asset replacement need every year. Unfortunately, that is because of years of deferred maintenance, it is too large. And yes, we we know that it is a large ask, but it is presented every year in CIP. This year, I believe it was 3.5 on a very conservative side. And the recommendation is to be funded at not even 2 million this this year. And so it has been the story over the last three years. So it needs to be replaced. There are other roofs that are being replaced as well. For example, the Sorenson Unity Center will get replaced this year as well. We have replaced fire station roofs over the last two years as well. So yes, those those are on the top of the list.
Yeah, I'm not doubting that the roof needed a replacement and that's not the point here. What I'm trying to say is in the overall list of roofs, let's say just roofs, let's stay on that one, one topic. And the overall list of roofs is this one, the highest one up there? That we really need to go into a budget amendment right now? Do we have that list? And you know, what are the other ones below this one? Or is there some above this one? That's the question.
So, yeah, first part of the question, yes, we want to maximize the 50% that the county is is responsible for. They have secured the money now and this this has been an issue in the past where they secure their their side of the agreement and we are unable to. So we are chasing each other. Unfortunately, the the price continues to go up. We have secured the county side. Now it is for the city. So we want to maximize that. That's why we are prioritizing it. And now, do we have a list of other roofs? Yes, we do as well.
I've said it before, but I think it's worth making a plug for a five-year CIP plan. It's called a Capital Asset Plan. And this this would be one of the tools to look at all of the city's obligations, not just facilities, but parks and roads and fire stations and look at them holistically over a longer horizon in order to help prioritize and align it with the council's policy goals. That's similar to the library's master facilities plan. Some ways, but for city buildings, not library buildings.
And we are currently working on that. The CAP CIP group in the Finance Department, we have started working on that. When you see CIP's presentation, you will see the new flow chart for the new CAP CIP group and how it works, how the new process will flow down so that we can get a decent capital asset plan and move that forward to CIP.
Great.
Yeah, I just just want to put a plug on the deferred maintenance side of the house. You know, you always, you never have enough money to provide funding for all your maintenance. But if you allow that deferred maintenance to get behind, the next thing you know is that you can never catch up and you're basically never getting catching up and it's going to cost you more and more money as a long run. So we do have to, as Ben said, the five-year plan. We do have to start tackling that stuff because we want to at least get to the point where it's neutral and not continuously flying off because then it becomes so much more a quality of life for the whole city.
I agree. We have windstorms that create emergencies, but a 23-year roof, when the expectancy is 20, we should be helping them. I know Jorge and his team are working tremendously. We need to be more proactive in helping them get that done in a reasonable amount of time, so.
Yep, absolutely. What Cindy's mentioned, the new ERP system would allow you to say, hey, we need to start saving for the the boiler going out and the roof going out and.
Central plant. We are at time. What are, what is our schedule on this item? Do we need to? There was one other item that had a straw poll. Okay. I could jump to that and we could stop there. Yeah, okay. The other item is A11, a request for $50,000 from General Fund Balance for additional environmental assessment work. This is a request from the Sustainability Department and it's specifically for continuing the work at the Redwood Road former landfill site where a tiny home village is planned. There is consultant work to finalize a remedial action plan, which then needs to be approved by the State Department of Environmental Quality or DEQ. This $50,000 would continue that work. Without this funding, the work would be paused until next fiscal year. Some of the funding could also be used for environmental issues at the Fleet Block. The remedial action plan is just that, it's only a plan. The actual remediation on the site would be done concurrent with construction. There there was $100,000 in the annual budget for environmental remediation work. Most of those funds have been spent at this site. There was also a small amount used for developing community garden environmental standards and procedures.
Mr. Chair, I moved it, or I'd like to make a straw poll that we.
Support.
Thank you.
Support A11. So I have a quick question on that. So this is. Was this $50,000? I'm not sure how to frame, never mind. I'll think about my question a little more. Okay, the straw poll is to support this $50,000. Yes.
I have a question. Hold on. Sorry, I was out. Like, sorry, sorry.
We're all trying to think of our questions.
Yeah, one moment. Our agreement with this project was to pay for all of the environmental assessment requirements for this site. And let's say they did some sampling and then it went over budget because they need to do additional sampling. So we have already agreed that we're doing this. So we have to come up with the money to help or were there other funding sources for this? That wasn't city's funding sources?
The city is fronting these costs and the agreement with the future operator of the tiny home village is that they would be reimbursed to the city.
Okay, that's our agreement. That's in writing. It's in a contract. We're going to get this money back.
Yes.
Great.
Thanks for reminding me. That was, I knew there was something there, but I couldn't quite remember.
Great, thanks.
All right, so the straw poll is to support this $50,000. Sure. Okay, that's six to zero with Councilmember Fowler absent. All right, so I guess we'll move the rest of this budget amendment to another.
Next Tuesday?
I know that next week's Tuesday is going to be real busy, but. The the council's not scheduled to adopt this until June 13th with the annual budget. So if next Tuesday doesn't work, there's, there's other Tuesdays. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mary Beth. We are moving on to item number five. This is an informational update on the proposal for investing in the Perpetual Housing Fund of Utah. This is the proposal for $10 million of the city's allocated American Rescue Plan Act dollars. We have, I, is the mayor here?
Just barely sent you a message that you probably haven't seen, but Rachel's going to fill in for the mayor real quick.
Okay, great. So we have Rachel Otto, Jennifer Bruno, and then Chris Parker and Ashley Atkinson from Give Development here to present on this. Go ahead and come up and I think we'll give the mayor's office the first sort of word if you're, if you'd like.
Thank you, council chair and council members. I'll be very brief and thank you for letting me sit in for the mayor here for just a moment. I first of all, just want to thank the council for your very conscientious work around all of the rescue plan allocations and your patience with the administration as we've worked through a lot, a lot of ideas, a lot of goals and a lot of work with our partners at the Perpetual Housing Fund of Utah to bring you this exciting proposal. And just to remind you of where we started with this a couple of years ago at this point, when the city first received notice that we were going to get a significant amount of rescue plan funds, the mayor, her, she really took some time to set out what her priorities would be and how to present those to you. And as I'm sure you probably remember, the biggest priority was revenue replacement and making sure that the city remained whole through the pandemic and all of the financial ups and downs that came along with that and the financial uncertainty. The second issue was really the most. The second issue was really the most, the city's most urgent needs, so public safety, housing security, and addressing homelessness. And then the third category that the mayor really has felt strongly about focusing on was building a lasting generational change for families in Salt Lake City. And as you know, as you've been on this journey with us over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of iterations of that and are excited to start talking with you in more detail today about perpetual housing and the change that we think it can bring to families in Salt Lake City over the next several decades to make sure that, you know, we're all benefiting from the astronomical growth that we're seeing in the city and that we're not continuing to leave families behind who can't access housing and who are struggling to keep up with rent and rising costs. As I know, we all are very focused on that in our work here at the city. So I'll hand it back to Jen and then to Chris and Ashley from the Perpetual Housing Fund.
Thank you, Rachel. Jennifer Bruno for council.
Thanks, Rachel. I'll just give a really brief introduction as it relates to the city context, so as it relates to the city tools and logistics. Budget amendment number six, which you just discussed, actually includes this proposal. So that's where this proposal is living from the perspective of council approval or not. So it will be heard in the public hearing tonight and considered on June 13th unless you defer action. The dollars that the city received from the federal government through ARPA have mostly been spoken for, although the proposal is to spend the remaining $10 million. And the city must spend those dollars by December of 2024. Affordable housing development is an allowable use under ARPA, and this proposal anticipates that the dollars will be spent by mid-2024, which will meet the city's deadline to spend those dollars. The city's dollars would essentially be invested with a third-party nonprofit, the Perpetual Housing Fund of Utah, to use money as seed development and seed money to facilitate the development of a unique housing product in the market for affordable rental units. While this proposal is not technically structured like a community land trust in the traditional sense, some council members have pointed out that it does provide a similar path for renters of affordable units to build equity in ways that they otherwise wouldn't, as well as receive yearly rental rebates. The concept of sharing equity with renters in addition to investors has been a policy interest of multiple council members in different ways over a number of years, including the Community Land Trust administered by hand and the Westside Community Initiative administered by the RDA. So it's in line with some of those programs, although it is a separate and distinct proposal. And the logistics of each program works slightly differently. And then I'll turn it over to Chris Parker and Ashley Atkinson to go over how the tool works in general and then what the city can expect in the immediate and long term with this investment.
Thank you. Jennifer, council members, are there any questions before Chris and Ashley get started? Okay, thank you for being here. Go ahead and...
Hi.
These are your slides, right?
Yeah, if we can. Hi, my name is Chris, and I'm really excited to talk about Perpetual Housing Fund with this group. We really appreciate your consideration of this program. We think it'll help a lot of Salt Lake families have a revenue source and really build generational wealth that they could not have in any other way. As comes is no surprise to anyone in this group. Maybe we could advance to slide one. The difference between owning a home and not owning a home is one of the most pronounced and often the most pronounced thing in a person's life as it relates to how much wealth they might generate over that life. You have, and these are 2019 numbers, so these have actually gotten worse over the last three years, a 40x expected net worth and actual net worth if you own a home versus if you are a renter in the United States. It is the single biggest differentiator between those who might end life with a nest egg that can support them through retirement, or pay for their children's college, or create some sort of generational loop that is beneficial instead of a generational loop that is not. Next slide. The problem with the truth of homeownership being the single biggest economic factor in someone's wealth-creating life is that the ability to own a home has very strongly eradicated over the last three to four years in Salt Lake City and Utah, generally speaking. In Utah, only 11% of the homes were affordable even to the median income of Utah in this past year, and it's slightly rebounding, but not much. The ability to have something of an on-ramp to the American dream is becoming very scarcely available to the majority of Utahns, not just those who might start in a lower or moderate economic class. Next slide. Federally, we support affordable housing relatively strongly in this country to the tune of about $40 billion. But in most years, at least prior to the Trump administration, the bigger subsidy we give for housing broadly in this country actually goes to upper and upper-middle-income families in the form of the write-off that you have for the interest in your mortgage. The reason we do that, I think, is fairly sound. There's an idea that owning your home gives a certain amount of stability, and that also owning that home is the way that you might handle later in life expenses and generally generate wealth over time. We give almost no subsidy to the middle group of Utahns or people in this country that are making just a little bit too much for more traditional federal subsidies but can't quite afford the home. And that group has grown to be a huge percentage of Utah and Salt Lake City specifically. And we do have some affordable housing programs in this country. The trouble with these programs, while they're desperately needed and do good work, is that we satisfy ourselves with the subsidy we give to lower-income households with simply giving them a one-month roof cover, more or less, an injection of cheap rent that makes sure that they're not on the street. But that subsidy doesn't go to generating the sort of wealth that the upper-income subsidies we have typically do. So the people most at need in having some health-generating wealth and getting maybe out of an intergenerational poverty standpoint are the ones that our subsidies do absolutely nothing to help in that regard. And in fact, many of these programs have caps on how much money you can make, a true social safety net, instead of something like you'd want it to be a trampoline. Next slide. Density should be able to help this. Generally speaking, if you are building a single-family home and your land cost begins at $150,000, there's really no algebraic equation that ends in an affordable house. You simply can't construct something that would approach a mortgage size that the even typical now Salt Laker could afford. Density should be able to help that by reducing your average land cost per unit into the tens of thousands instead of the hundreds of thousands. However, next slide, we do not see that actually happening in practice. And the reason for this is condo development, which should be the individual owner development option for multifamily, generally isn't happening in this state and certainly isn't happening in Salt Lake. And there's a lot of reasons for that. There's a liability concern for a lot of developers that is recently kind of overtaken in the last four or five years. There's a profit motive that simply isn't there over a regular multifamily-for-rent product. And generally, these are just exceedingly hard to do. Banks don't want to do them, architects don't want to do them, and contractors don't want to build them. And so unsurprisingly, though we have this tool of density that can help us with our affordable housing problems, it is not being used. All of these very dense buildings that are being built all over this city are accruing wealth, almost like a dike in the ground, to perhaps 50 development firms that control almost the entirety of development in the state. So we're getting affordable, more affordable rents, although even that is getting more difficult to find. But all of the wealth generation from real estate, which used to be the thing that made the middle class, is actually accruing to the top 1% or more in the way that it's being built right now. Next slide. One way you might be able to kind of bend that reality into something like a wealth-generation model for the middle class is to have shared ownership models of actual apartment buildings. Rather than trying to give everyone their own condo, which is hard to do, you could just build buildings the way that the market seems to want to build them and then redistribute, you know, some of the revenues, all the revenues, a large portion of the revenues of these structures to the residents that actually live in those buildings. Go ahead, next slide. What that would do is it would allow the middle percentage of those who can afford market rent but cannot afford a home to go ahead and have some level of equity generation. What that leaves is this lower segment of the population that can't really afford market rent, that are housing scarce or housing insecure. How do we go ahead and try to give them the same benefits that the upper-two groups have, which we'll talk about on the next slide? There is a program that is set up to provide affordable housing in this country. There's a lot of buildings that use this program in Salt Lake City, and that's the tax credit model. Basically, federal government gives tax credits, you sell those tax credits, and you're able to have lower debt on a structure. Therefore, you're able to charge less rent. And it's a great model. It's the most successful housing model the country's ever had. However, if we look at the next slide, the downside of it is that while we are providing affordable rent, which, again, very needed thing to do, again, all of the equity generated in those buildings over time, as AMI's rise, as mortgages get paid down, accrue to developers, their investors, you know, parties that are constructing these, not necessarily living in these buildings. And so PHF's model, in a word, on the next slide, is taking that pre-existent model and making the majority of the profits generated, whether that's on an annual basis, or when a refinance happens, or when a property is sold, actually accrue to the low and moderate-income families that live in these buildings, giving them the sort of nest egg that they might have experienced were they to own a home, but in a way that is accessible, that requires no down payment, that requires no perfect credit score, that doesn't require you to be able to qualify for a $4,000 loan, which is what the median house now costs at current interest rates. This is a truly innovative model that takes all the benefits of multifamily apartment development and that efficiency and combines it with the wealth-sharing model that used to be reserved for condos and single-family homes. So we'll talk a little bit on the next slide about, and maybe even one more, about what this looks like in practice and what Salt Lake City's specific investment would be funding for the city. Perpetual Housing Fund will do this in other areas of Utah as well, but this is just talking about what would happen in Salt Lake City directly with the city's money.
So to summarize Salt Lake City's investment, the $10 million is an investment. So Salt Lake City would receive 2% to 6% return on that money every year, and at the end of the 20 years, or at some point in the future, that $10 million would be returned to the city. Perpetual Housing Fund is promising 1,000 equity-sharing units within Salt Lake City in the next 10 to 15 years, and we'll talk about how we plan to do that on the next slide. But the $10 million will be all used for units that are affordable to those making 65% AMI and below, because that's an ARPA requirement. And then there are another 500 condos that we're going to work with Rocky Mountain Homes Fund on some of those, and PHF will do some of those that are for higher 60% to 100% AMI. In the same buildings, we want buildings with mixed income, but the ARPA funds will not be used in anything above the 65% AMI. The next slide shows how we're planning on getting those 1,000 units and the 500 units. So there's the 515 project that we'll probably talk about later that you guys may have seen in the presentations. And that will be our first project. That'll be a combination of 100 or more condo units, up to 120% AMI, and then two 9% phases with a possible third phase in the future in that 5-on-5 building. And then in addition to that, we plan on four 4% or 4% and 9% 20 projects over the next 10 years to get to that 1,000 units, and those would all be in Salt Lake City.
Next slide.
These are the pro formas. We can talk about those more in the questions. But the next slide shows a little bit, we can, this shows how the numbers, how we're getting to those numbers on the pro forma. So a resident pays their rent, just like a typical Lytec project. The project pays its expenses, its operating expenses, its capital reserves, and its debt. And then there's net cash flow at the end of the year. That net cash flow, 75% of that net cash flow goes to the tenants, 25% comes back to PHF to help us operate and grow. There's also the equity in the project. So from developing the project, there's instant equity. There's also equity as the project stabilizes and the asset grows, and equity, the asset value grows, and then the debt reduction as we're paying the loan down. So 75% of that is also going to the tenants. That is not realized immediately because that is tied up in the project. So that will be realized at a future refinance event sometime 10 to 15 years. And so the four ways that tenants are getting back their money is, first, the cash flow that I just talked about, second, the equity at the refinance event 10 to 15 years down the road. Third, we are going to donate a part of the developer fee into a HELOC-type vehicle. So the residents, if they have a qualifying event, if they want to go back to school, if they want to buy a house and they need a down payment, if they have a medical emergency, they can pull a piece of that equity that's still tied up in the building to use for one of those events so that they aren't going into debt for one of those events. And then the fourth way is our partnership with Rocky Mountain Homes Fund. They can trade their equity for a down payment in a Rocky Mountain Homes Fund or a PHF condo. We can skip this slide. That just shows the opposite, the developer point of view. This slide shows at the bottom, so this shows how the asset appreciates over time. At the bottom, it shows three different scenarios. So Resident A lives in the project for 10 years. Resident B lives there for three years, and then in that same unit, a different resident moves in for seven years. So if the refinance event occurs at the end of 10 years, you can see that we're splitting the equity equally over the 10 years, and someone, even though the refinance event doesn't happen and the money isn't paid out until year 10, the person that moved out at year three is getting their share of the equity. The rest are kind of just appendices in case we have questions. So I think we can turn it over to questions.
Thank you. Council members, do you have questions on this?
Councilor Dugan. Thank you very much for this presentation. It was nice hearing it twice in like a short period of time. So I actually got more the second time. So thank you. That just shows you how slow I am on some of these things, so I appreciate all this. But I'm going to go back to the questions that I presented last time, we talked about. You know, I love the idea of the cash flow, and I would still like to, because that's an annual cash flow basis, I'd like to continually explore how we can make sure that money is actually invested and not used for, to grow their equity. The second thing is, this is a wonderful vision and I think a wonderful project in one sense. But when I look through, and then when I look through my eyes and I go, well, I've understood finances, I understand a budget, and I understand how to spend money and save money, but that may not be the case of all people. And how we make sure that the individuals that are benefiting from this understand and are maybe, or provide some training or some mentoring on budgeting, finances, the cost of saving early so that your revenue grows, you know, later on, you know? And how we make sure that piece of this is firmed, because it doesn't really do us any good if we don't have any training to back up what we're trying to do. So I just love it, but I would like to make sure that we have that mentoring program that's working with the renters or the tenants.
We completely agree. And I think especially before cash payments start going to residents, I do think we've budgeted in our operating expenses to have a sit-down about, you know, how you might go ahead and approach getting a large sum of money and the appropriate ways of spending that. And at the end of the day, it will be their money. But I completely agree that making sure that what is a potentially very large equity event for them doesn't, gets treated with a certain level of potential life change that it can be. That's the entire reason we're doing this system, so we should make sure that it actually works.
Okay, so council member Puy, then Valdemir, and then Pietro.
I, you know, I just want to say again, also to, it's nice to hear twice, very close to each other, so I can, you know, understand it better. And I, it is true that this is not happening. I mean, homeownership for most families, it's almost... I mean, homeownership for most families, it's almost impossible at this moment. I mean, I can afford my own house if I wanted to buy it today, I think. So that's kind of crazy. And I appreciate this concept, and I think it is a very good use of ARPA dollars to create a significant change for the next, I mean, the next decade. And that means hundreds of families are able to own and to keep and capture some of that equity that is so valuable. And this is not only for people that know how to save money and how to, you know, there is a lot of us, a lot of in my community, that do know the concepts, and they know how to save money. I mean, I don't think there is a better person to manage a budget than poor people, let me tell you. You know, but it is about having the tools. And the market is not catching up with income levels, and the market, the price market for houses is in the opposite direction. So I think this might be a very interesting option for those ARPA dollars that we have in the city. So thank you for the update.
I just wanted to say how creative and how awesome that we can look at different ways of doing wealth building as the city and as we've been talking for a while. So I think this is super interesting. I didn't have the chance to have that meeting, so I would like it still, so that I can be more familiar with it. You know, one of the things, like, if I put myself in the renter, like, when I was a renter, when I was, you know, when I was a young professional renter, you know, I didn't have this hope, you know, like, it wasn't, like, it wasn't an option. The only option was, I will hopefully one day I'll buy a house, you know, or condo or whatever. So it was never, so I was never really paying attention that much. I didn't have the, nobody told me about budget, what I needed to be saving for, what I needed, my credits, all of the thing. And I wish I had that so that I could get into the housing market earlier. But with this, it seems like we're providing an opportunity for those. And also to learn about things that I didn't know before, which is, you know, when you own something, or at least, you know, you're getting some money back, you also need to plan ahead on roof repairs, and on facade repairs, and on plumbing repairs, and all of the things. And I think once people understand that, you almost start thinking, like, you're more serious about, like, where you live at, and you start, like, planning and budgeting and knowing that you, you know, that this piece of building, it's yours, you know, at some point. I think it will be a lot of benefit, not only for the city, for the building, but for those that will be able to get something back and be really into it, I guess, that's what I'm trying to say. So I appreciate this. I think it's a great investment with this generational investment that we need to do. So I want to hear more about it. Thanks.
Councilor Pietro.
I'd like to remind us all that I love, I love the project. I have done professional research on shared equity models, and I am glad that we're finally getting one here in Salt Lake and the opportunity to invest in this. We are not saving anyone. We are participating in the rightful act of correcting historical wrongs whereby homeownership and generational wealth development has been deprived. No one needs us to give them financial counseling. I am glad that we consider it as part of a package. The people who will show up to take part in this are people who rightfully are being served by their community to correct historical wrongs. So I just want us to be real careful. We're not saving anyone here. We are doing what is right. I am thankful that this perhaps is even a costly moral action for you all to stand in the gap to do. I want to acknowledge that there are people of color who have been working towards this in these communities as well, who still need the opportunity to participate in the ways that are rational to them to fix this issue. But I want us to be real careful about how we discuss this and how we discuss the people who will benefit from our rightful action here today.
Councilmembers, any other questions? If not, I do have a question. So I've heard this a few times now, and I'm getting a little more information every time. Let me ask the question, what happens if the project goes poorly? Thing, construction costs skyrocket, some ancient burial ground is found, and all the other things happen, and you have to get a $3 million RDA bridge loan and whatever else. And so there's additional debt service, monthly debt service that is required. Let's say all those things happen. I assume the first thing that stops is that there's no cash flow, or there's less cash flow, so that amount to the renter is less, right?
I think the first stop would be the developer fee. We would put the developer fee, like, if construction costs went too high, or something happened that we didn't know. On the bigger projects, there is quite a big developer fee that we would put ahead of before that happened.
Yeah, and I think there's the two risks. There's during construction, which all of our budgets have standardized contingencies, which would get touched first. And as Ashley mentioned, a developer fee would come next. And then, you know, potentially, it would be after all of those events that we would have, you know, some sort of issue. We've built a lot of these, or at least I personally, with another group I have, have built a lot of these. And so, you know, knock on wood, we've been able to navigate those well. During the actual project, let's say the, you know, value of real estate goes down. That actually is one of the real benefits of this model, is right now, there are probably hundreds, maybe thousands, but definitely hundreds of people in the city that bought nine months ago, or bought a year ago, and have watched their home value erode. And that's a leveraged home value. And so that might end up being a very poor economic choice for them. That 25% eats all of that economic downside before the residents get touched at all. And it also, when we have a refinance event, let's say you get a 75% mortgage, 100% of the cash of their share gets refinanced into them before PHF gets anything. And so in the event of a bad event, we have made, you kind of have all of the benefits of ownership economically, with literally none of the downside. No one, no one will see their money go down because the project has an operational problem. So we're excited about that protection.
Worst-case scenario, they were, worst-case scenario was what we're already doing, which is providing an apartment at an income-restricted level, and there is no equity event.
No, correct.
Assuming, assuming everything went wrong.
Absolutely.
I guess the question is, what happens with the $10 million ARPA dollars in that case? If it all, we invested in this project, we realize there's some fatal flaw and it, like, doesn't work, which has happened with affordable housing ideas in past generations? And would, I know that there was, like, the city was guaranteed a 2% to 5% return over the next 10 years, but like, that's the piece that I'm not quite understanding. How does the city get paid back on that?
No, happy to answer that. Basically, the city's money, and what's really unique about how this money works, is that it isn't tied in a specific project. So typically, a lot of municipalities, counties, states have been at the very tail end of a project where they give gap financing, very needed in many cases, gap financing that attaches to a project for 40 years. What this fund actually does, it gets in at the beginning of the project, so that it's doing different deals. But also, it means that your, collectively, the city's $10 million really is only involved in the early-stage acquisition and pre-development expenses and the general building of something. The actual operational expenses don't, will never be touched for the $10 million in ARPA money. So this isn't just kind of a freewheeling account that PHF will do what it pleases with to subsidize losses. This is a development account to produce as many affordable units as we can and make sure that the wealth of those go to the people it is. So the 2% to 5% that the city gets operates in a couple ways. The city is either going to have its money in one of two places. Either it's going to be in the early stages of a project, in which case, we imagine the city, just like any other construction loan or equity event, would be making a, you know, a discounted but construction-level return that the project would pay, just as if it had gotten money from any other source. It's a reduced source, thank you, that allows really that wealth to move on to the tenants. But the construction event is really what generates those returns. And then when it isn't in a project for probably a pretty brief period, it'll be in an interest-yielding bank account, which is above the amount that's being promised as a floor to the city. So in either cases, it's a revenue-generating asset that is better than market for everything it is doing, but is always accruing some level of interest on the construction side of the deal, not necessarily the operation side of the deal.
And if the city wanted to divest, it would be that repayment over 10 years? Or so, it's structured as, is it structured as a loan?
It's structured as a, you're really, you're not investing in a specific building with this money. You're investing in a different development entity, really, that builds the type of buildings that gives away all its money. I mean, more or less, in a nutshell. And so it will sit there, and when you do divest, if you want to, at the end of the ARPA regulation, it'll just come from a development account. It won't attach to any of the projects that have been built over that timeframe, because it never got used. And that's one of the real beauties of the model, is, you know, Lytech deals, generally speaking, when you break ground, no longer have any actual equity left in them. The tax credits have replaced the traditional equity that a normal real estate deal would do. And so this $10 million just rolls and does a good thing, comes back, does another good thing, but it never diminishes. And that allows it really to create this sort of outsized impact of, you know, 1,000 units versus the 50 or 100 it might have done otherwise if it were just gap financing on the back end. So it kind of just goes, and it rolls around until such time as the city decides it would like it back, in which case, thank you, and you'll get your money and all the returns for that period as well. We are strongly committed to creating not only equity for residents, but creating models for the city itself to not diminish its capacity to fight what will be a growing need for housing in the future. It's important to us that there is a return to the city with these funds, rather than them just being given away. And so hopefully, you know, the $10 million will go back, and you'll also have a lot more money that's been made over that timeframe that you can further use for whatever you'd like, but hopefully housing, I'm biased.
Is it fair to characterize us as part of the cash stack for building?
Temporary, the construction cash stack. It will not be in the permanent cash stack.
And then the $10 million at the end of that, we reauthorize the use again for the next, when you were saying it goes to the next one and the next one? We reauthorize each one, or you're...
It's not anticipated that you would do a project-by-project reauthorization. You would do a blanket, early-stage authorization of a type of project. And as long as the next project type were this thing that you had already authorized, it would just naturally flow without your input.
And are all of, are all of the different things you're talking about, the things that we saw planned out on the calendar, like, all of those projects? Or are they potential future undisclosed projects that we don't know about right now?
There's two proposed immediate projects. What we wanted to do is show how, 1,000 units sounds like a really big number. And we wanted to show how that might lay out over 10 years. Candidly, I would like it to be earlier than we've shown, but what that was, what that wanted to show is that, you know, one 4%, and, sorry, 4% 9% vernacular, the two types of tax credit applications for people that aren't wonks on housing tax credit finance law. You know, really with doing one of those every couple of years, and then with doing a similar amount of 9% every couple of years, you get to that 1,000 units. We would like to see that accelerated, but we, I don't want to come up here and promise a bunch of things that have a bunch of, you know, things we're hopeful for but can't promise.
Yeah, if we're going to go beyond the scope of what we're seeing, I'm, especially if we're creating opportunities for equity development, if we're creating opportunities for homeownership, if we're diversifying the housing landscape, especially if you're into geographical distribution so that people can choose what neighborhood they live in regardless of their income, all of those things are great, but I would really need tight MOUs on if we're not voting every time for that reinvestment, on how that's governed and how the city as an apparatus monitors that. Because while you're an awesome person, if you get hit by a bus tomorrow and the organization goes on without you.
I don't like that there's two people in that scenario.
It's, I come from nonprofits, and that's always the thing. Like, if you get hit by a bus, how does your org continue? So, but you know, if that, if that happens, like, we need more than, like, our trust in a personality. We need really, really strong parameters to protect the citizens' money and the citizens who would be in there.
And we would welcome that.
Mr. Chair, maybe I could chime in, just, sorry, just from a city logistical perspective. In the staff report, it lays out a number of proposed conditions that the RDA would have a contract with PHF. They're inviting council feedback on those conditions, so if you wanted to take a look at those, maybe that would be helpful, because I think it speaks to your request of next steps. And I probably should have mentioned that from the beginning. This money would be administered by the redevelopment agency. You're considering it as the city council because the city received the $10 million ARPA grant, but just from your hats perspective, that's how it would flow.
Thanks, Jennifer. Councilmember Warden.
So I definitely need the presentation at least one more time, maybe a couple more. But, so I want to ask more about the 515 project. So will the 38, this is in the staff report, will the 38 units in that project be spread around? Because it seems a little confusing about whether they'll only be on floors two and four, or whether they'll be throughout the building.
Yeah, and we actually, we've modified a model on that, which we're happy to share. It's in our current presentation. We were trying to show, like, the chunk.
Got it.
But no, it's anticipated that, you know, every third or fourth floor, you'd have a floor of PHF, and then you'd have a floor of traditional condos.
Okay, and then does it also address, like, separating, well, I guess it would be pretty hard to do that if they were spread around the building, but like, in your, for example, in the Give project, you talk about, like, democratizing some of the amenities that you have there. Will that be a component of this project as well?
Yeah, there will not be anyone living in the building that has any different lifestyle or amenity package or view than anybody else in the building. So your neighbor, you will know nothing about them that they're your neighbor on any given floor, as far as their income.
Okay. And then this, I'm only like a quarter joking, but will there be enough money in this project to do, like, a mural on this building as well? Because that would be amazing, like you've done with some of your other projects.
I love public art.
As do I. And it's not the best building in town. So, it's not the worst. It's not the worst. It's not the worst, but there's plenty of room.
I, you know, what's interesting about that, the older structure, is I have a lot of, you know, friends involved in architecture that adore that building. And so I, so I...
I love the honesty, too. But if we're being honest, if we're being honest, I would honestly love the more...
I can't promise this, which was why I didn't immediately bring it up, but we're currently studying actually having what will be basically a projection head built in the front to have art projected on the side of the building on a rotating, it wouldn't modify the structure itself, which is a very, that architect wanted it to be one color. And it is, for better or worse, it very much is.
Yeah, check that box.
But yeah, I think a really nice projection apparatus where you could change the type of art happening on the building on the side of it would be a nice blend between people who think it might not, you shouldn't paint brick, and people who are like, that's a lot of brick. So I hear you.
Thank you.
So I think we probably still will have some questions. Appreciate this presentation and the pre-presentations, and it sounds like post-presentations that you'll be doing. I think some of the questions that it sounds like we have are, what does that actual contract look like? What are the off-ramps from that contract if and when the city decides that this isn't the model that they want to continue investing in? You know, what, how does that look? And what are those sort of agreements? It sounds like that's in our staff report, so we have some homework to do, and then maybe that's a point for some more discussion. But just a reminder, this is in the current budget amendment, and it was June 14th.
So the public hearing would be tonight, and you could actually act at any point until June, I believe it's 13th, which is the night you adopt the annual budget, unless you decided to defer action on it for some reason outside of Budget Amendment Number Six.
So it sounds like Councilman Fowler had a question.
Yes, there is one additional question, if you're okay with that.
Go ahead, yeah.
Councilmember Fowler wondered, there have been recent legislative efforts to allow renters' rent payments to help build their credit score, and she was wondering if this project could help towards that, or if that would still require state legislation.
We use that on all Give projects and anticipate using it here.
Okay, I didn't understand the question.
Is it just a reporting thing, or?
Yeah, basically, how it used to be is, payments on a mortgage would record to your credit score, but payments on rent wouldn't. And so we've made it so positive payments on rent report to your credit score.
Great, so it's a voluntary developer thing? That's interesting to know.
Building owners and man- Building owners and managers can choose to report to credit agencies that they're not required to.
We actually, it ultimately arrested the tenants. So we have an opt-in that if you would like your rent to be reported on your credit score to build credit, you may.
Really interesting.
That's really interesting. I didn't realize it was project by project like that.
He says, thank you. And that's awesome.
It's an opt-in.
That's interesting.
And in this case, and in this case, they're keeping, there is, there is a level of ownership. So it's easier to, to make that change, right? Like there is, there is.
Not officially ownership, right?
Yeah, that's true.
They have no deed.
Yeah. I mean, and really it should, it should report like a mortgage if it's going to give you some of the benefits.
Closer to a traditional co-op model.
I, but co-op, you still have a deed in the co-op.
Technically it is not ownership. It's the goodies of ownership, but it is not ownership.
It's, and yeah, this is why it's so hard for us. But thank you so much for, for being patient with us, trying to figure this out. I think we will move on to our break. It is 4:32. Our break was scheduled at 4:20. So do you want to take the full 20 minutes? Are we going to be in trouble if we do that? Okay. We'll take 20 minutes. We'll come back at 4:52. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Break. We are on item number seven, which is an informational review of the Department of Public Lands' report on adequately maintaining Salt Lake City's public lands. That is a wordy title.
It is.
We have here Kristin Riker and everyone else. Sorry.
I will introduce.
But thank you for being here.
Thank you. And we do have a presentation. If we could get that pulled up, that'd be great. In the meantime, I'll introduce Carmen Bailey. She is our deputy director over operations. So she oversees golf, urban forestry, parks and the park rangers and Tyler Murdoch. And he oversees planning and trails and natural lands divisions. So thanks for having us. You can go to the next slide here. Hopefully you all got a chance to review our, our document. I know it was a lengthy one, but it was a big question. And we tried our best to think of as, as many ways possible to adequately maintain our, our parks. And so in this presentation, I just briefly want to give an overview. We're going to provide information about what it takes to adequately maintain our parks. Funding and staffing deficiencies is certainly a portion of that. Our aging infrastructure is a portion. Grow, the growth of the city, the population growth, extreme weather events, and most impactful really is the camping and the crime and victimization of our park staff, which is pushing away our workforce. The seven points listed here are the way we broke down our challenges and offered solutions. The next seven slides will briefly explain each of these areas and are presented in areas of most impact and our ability to maintain those public spaces. I'll go into more detail of the first two points, just since those are kind of most impactful to us, and then just share highlights of the other five points. At the end of the presentation, we will show you a table outlining the costs and FTEs for the strategies, but please feel free to interrupt us at any time. We can stop and talk about whatever one you'd like. We're currently working to employ many of these strategies, as many as we can. And so throughout the presentation, you'll see slides that are redlined. And that just shows where we are currently working on something or we've accomplished it. This was given to us a year and a half ago. And so as we've worked on it, some of the things we've actually accomplished, which is great. Okay. So next slide, please. The first area evolving our workforce is the most key element in adequately maintaining our parks. This section begins on page four of the document. First and foremost, the daily realities of camping in our parks and the safety concerns in relation to drug use and criminal activity is really shrinking our workforce. When staff come to work at 6:00 AM to check the functioning of the irrigation system or to mow the lawn or to clean the restrooms, they're waking people up who are actually living in the park. And that's very unwelcome to those folks that are living in the park. And it often comes down to yelling at our park staff, threatening our park staff. And at times our park staff have been assaulted in the parks. And we've lost quite a few staff because of their fear for their personal safety. Without the assistance of law enforcement to uphold our parks curfew, staff are instructed to avoid areas of parks that feel unsafe. And as a result, some portions of parks, some parks are not adequately maintained in the way other areas might be because our staff is avoiding that area because they feel uncomfortable. We're asked to be told that if that happens and then we can work with the police department to help us in those instances, but that's what happens. Our response to your question, how much will it cost to adequately maintain parks includes a recommendation for adding law enforcement of park curfew hours through off-duty police officers or the reinstatement of the park squad in the police department. The cost of off-duty police officers is in the final table at the end of this presentation. It's not in your document you received, and that's because we were working with the police department at that time to develop that cost. So it's in this presentation and I'm happy to share this updated table with you. Public lands is currently using our year-end funding to, our, our year-end salary savings to fund off-duty police officers to enforce the curfew right now. But that funding will end by June 30th and then we will not have additional enforcement of the curfew unless something is funded. The second point here is it has become increasingly more difficult to hire employees and even more so seasonal employees. And, and this is kind of an interesting thing that maybe you are aware of or not, but under the Affordable Care Act of 2010, prior to 2010, the parks model was, you know, you have all of these seasonal employees and they work 40 hours a week for nine months and then they're off. After 2010, we can't hire employees for more than 29 hours in a week without providing them with health insurance. So we looked into health insurance. Can we give them health insurance and work them more than that? And we found out that if we give them health insurance and we work them more than the 29 hours a week, we also have to pay them pension benefits. And those pension benefits and the health insurance are pretty costly. They're way outside our ability to pay them. And at some point it becomes less efficient to hire somebody and provide all those benefits and not just keep them year round because of the training costs over and over of retraining people. So because of this six-month limitation with the Affordable Care Act, all of our, all of our teams have to hire twice in a year. So we go through this hiring challenge twice. Once in, well, our, our season goes from March to October. And so after six months, then we have to let those folks go and then we have to do another hiring season. And so that becomes really challenging for our staff when they have a hard time anyway, finding seasonal staff. So we did look at the costs of hiring full-time parks maintenance technicians to full-time, and you can find those costs on page eight. I'm not going to go through that. Other solutions for evolving our workforce are adding an afternoon parks cleanup crew. And this would be a crew to manage garbage, restroom cleaning and troubleshooting at parks during peak times, during afternoons and weekends. That would help make the park, parks look much nicer. That's outlined on page seven. Adding staff to our very small trails and natural lands team. They're tasked with managing over 2,000 acres of land and 144 miles of paved and unpaved trails. That's outlined on page nine. And adding a parks project inspector to oversee construction projects. That's on page six. And that would help our, our operations managers not be stuck looking at project plans and actually be doing operations management and supervising their staff. Next page. I swear they'll get shorter as we go. These first two are just kind of large topics. So the next slide is matching our, our population growth and growth of the park system. And this starts on page 10 of the document. Reimagine Nature Plan of 2022 calls for adding 94 acres of new park space by 2040 to maintain the same service level as when they assessed our system in 2017. This, so 94 acres would significantly disperse the visitor use in public spaces throughout more acreage of land. Since 2015, we added eight and a half acres and that includes Imperial Park. It includes Allen Park and Three Creeks. And then with the GO bond, we'll be able to add another 20 acres to that. So that leaves us with about 65 more acres we'll be looking for by 2040. To manage Salt Lake City's population growth in terms of green space, we're proposing the following solutions. Pages 13 and 14 outline our need for and a plan to expand the public lands planning team from two planners to five. And these additional planners could have a significant impact on our projects and the backlog that we currently have, which is over 100 open projects. On page 11, you'll see that public lands is also in need of an acquisition plan and that will help us direct capital investment when we're acquiring properties. And then a strategic plan, which we actually were able to fund with some savings that we had this year. And we're just beginning work on the capital strategic plan. Next slide, please. As part of managing our urban, urban public land system, we make choices every day for our resource allocation. And there's a balance between the capital funding to replace the infrastructure and operational funding to further the life of an asset. And sometimes deciding where those funds goes can be difficult. And there isn't a single prescriptive way how we should do that. However, through our capital asset planning, we're hoping to develop a guide to use impact fees, funding requests to the mayor and to council and to help us in the direction of how we use our existing resources. So that should help us in, in prioritizing how our funding will go. So this section on addressing the city's aging infrastructure goes into key areas where the city is behind in asset planning for the park system. Pages 17 through 20 outlines the department's needs for new irrigation systems and technologies that will help the department more efficiently use water. And it also proposes, proposes a large equipment plan to keep our park staff wholly operational. Right now, we don't have a plan or we don't have funding for large equipment replacement. And our large area mowers can cost over $200,000 to replace. And we have done that in years past through some savings that we've had when we haven't been able to hire our seasonal staff. Next slide, please. One way to significantly improve, improve public land stewardship capacity and reduce the maintenance burden on field staff is to encourage the local community to take ownership of a park through partnerships, stewardship and programming. And I'm happy to say that we had, we do have quite a few partnerships and we have a very robust volunteer program right now. Pages 21 through 23 outline ideas to enhance community partnerships. And I'll just highlight those. Development of general plans, formerly known as master plans for all of our neighborhood, community and regional parks would help expedite some of the process for working with groups to have them come in and do volunteer work or do fundraising for our parks. Expanding the department's outreach team and budget to work with more community groups to make more of this volunteer activity happen. And my favorite is a, the community park activation grants. And we saw this in Cincinnati. And, and that is empowering community members to activate their closest and favorite parks by giving them a small grant to run, say, a dinner or a potluck or whatever they want to run in their parks. And that would help activate our parks. Next slide, please. Resolving structural imbalances. This is really acquired responsibilities and properties to the department with, that come to us without funding. And at this time, we only have a handful of those issues that take away from our core duties to adequately maintaining our public spaces. I'm not going to go into this one. That's outlined on page 23. On page 24 is the start of our urban forestry resilience goal. Our greatest challenge, I think, as everyone knows, is getting our trees watered. And the growth of our forest and trees creates more work orders for, and backlogs for arborists. So some of our requests for solutions have already been resolved, as you can see. However, page 25 outlines the cost and needs for an additional arborist crew. And page 26 describes uncaptured tree work needed at the golf courses, as well as a storm damage response and recovery plan, and plans for the development of urban forestry operations yard and a reutilization operation. Next slide. And this is the last point. Reducing or eliminating crime and antisocial behaviors in public spaces would greatly improve park safety appearances and increase healthy park uses. This strategy is outlined on page 27. So some of those strategies include involving the community in the redesign.
Can we move to the next slide?
Sorry?
I think we're on the wrong slide.
Oh.
There you go. Thank you. Sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off, Kristin.
So involving the community in the redesign of existing parks creates more relevance for the park and the, in the community, which can significantly activate our parks. And thankfully we're doing that through the GO bond. It's become a huge focus of our planning and community outreach team. When those parks are reimagined, we also take into consideration sightlines and hiding places and try to make sure that we don't have those in our parks to improve our maintenance. Selecting amenities that draw on the community and activate the park is essential to having more activity and less criminal activity, more positive activity and less criminal activity. And lastly, an additional animal services crew is, is proposed here that could patrol our public spaces and would provide greater compliance for dog ownership to follow leash laws in Salt Lake City parks. So next slide. This last slide is just a summary of our cost estimates to implement all the strategies available to improve the maintenance of our public lands. The department will continue to put forward these initiatives and projects through the budget process with our highest priority needs placed first so that we may achieve greater level of care for the lands under our stewardship. So with that, we're all here to answer questions.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler has a question and then we'll go to Councilmember Dugan.
Perfect.
Thank you. Sorry. I don't know, Kristin, if this is in the packet, but is there a cost estimate of what it would take both like including, sorry, my brain's working, I promise at some point, including the pension and health insurance benefits and all of that? If we converted, I know I saw it on your solutions, but converted the seasonal people and positions to full-time?
Yes. And that I believe is on page eight, nine?
Page nine.
Page nine.
And can you just, because I, I can't look right at this moment, what would that, what's that number?
Sorry, it's page eight. And well, what we did is we did it in three phases. So we said in, in each year, we would convert seven seasonals to full-time. And so each year, that cost, let's see, the full-time cost for new employees is $595,000. And then we would, we would use our seasonal staff dollars to credit that. And then there's ongoing costs. So, and then there's also one-time funding. So the total ongoing cost would be $455,975 for the first year. And, and every year, we didn't include inflationary costs in that, but we would ask for additional vehicles for those full-time people.
So each phase would be a yearly cost of half a million dollars. So by the time we're at like phase three of fully transitioning seasonals to, I mean, let's pretend that there's no inflation or anything like that. And just like for numbers sake, by the time we're at phase three, it would be like a million and a half a year.
Yeah. We have projected 1.3 million for 21 employees to be converted.
And is that, how many seasonals do we have now?
We have about anywhere from, sorry, 100 to 130 seasonals. It has been very difficult to hire seasonals. So.
This is only a small fraction of our seasonal plays that we're talking about. This is only a small fraction of our seasonal employees that we're talking about.
Our staff are very opposed to making everybody full-time. A, it's very expensive, but they need more people in the summer and they can get some people in the summer. It's just we can't fill all these positions. Bless you.
Councilmember Fowler, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dugan and did I see Pui?
Thanks, I appreciate it. And I appreciate the depth that you went in through the whole report. It was nice to read throughout the whole thing. And I was captured on the updates to the irrigation systems across all the different parks and the, you know, of course, the bird refugees that need some irrigation updates. And you had 14 million or 13 million allocated there. Was there a, and I wasn't quite sure where that is in this cycle, this budget cycle, and if you were allocating it for multiple years, just like you did for the FTEs? Because I didn't, maybe I missed that when I read the report.
Yeah, let's see. So, yeah.
We didn't do that same in-depth. We would have to go in and do a thorough assessment of these irrigation systems and that would be, so Tyler, I didn't know if you want to jump in on this.
Yeah, I can just, in the plan, it identifies essentially $2 million annually is what it would take. And that's looking at assets, what we would need to replace probably over 10 years. So a rolling $2 million annually to get everything up to speed. Typically, I mean, right now, we're not requesting that in a specific budget item. We deal with that right now in our capital improvement request. And so you will see those come through on many of our projects, updated irrigation systems, but it's done on a park-by-park basis, not a lump sum, like million-dollar allocation for irrigation.
And on page 17, there are some costs for several of our most.
Right. The question I was more like, so this upcoming year, we know there's $13 million and we know there's a lot of them that say, we need to replace them now, which that's on page 17.
Yeah.
Now, are those in the, were they in the mayor's recommended CIP list or?
Irrigation.
How are we chipping away at that?
Yeah, like I said, we chip away at that through individual park CIP projects. And I would have to look through the scope of each of those. I don't know if we've requested any this year. We currently have two ongoing. One at Hidden Hollow, one of our preserves that is getting ready to go out to bid. We also requested updates to irrigation systems for our Memorial Tree Growth Project that was funded this year. Those are the two that come to mind.
Councilmember Pui?
It's a tough one to ask for is people can't see the irrigation system. And I think what we asked for, well, I would have to look, but we have talked about like an irrigation replacement plan, to come up with a plan for what that would look like and which ones are in need first through the end and what those estimated costs would be. It's pretty costly. It does need to go through the capital program. It can't be used. Maintenance money can't replace a system.
Right, yeah, I just look at the safety side of the house and also some of these places that were, would be, are impacted because their irrigation systems don't work very well.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Question?
I do appreciate the, you know, your team and yourself looking into this since we have quite a lot of discussions last year. We almost made it up in the middle of the budget to try to give you, you know, full-time employees. And I'm glad that you put a lot of thought into this and tried to find a better way of maintaining our public spaces, right? The people, I mean, I hear a lot about my parks, the parks in district too. And many people are so thankful to have them, but you know, there is a but, but there is this happening right now. And I know that we can do a little better as a community and as a city also. I do have one quick question. I do appreciate the movement or the propose of moving some of the seasonal employees to, you know, part, full-time and try to leverage some of that. You did mention animal services crew. And I'm a little confused about that. Would that be like its own individual group of people, couple of people?
Yeah, I'll let Carmen take that. So it would be, whatever, I didn't look at the cost, but it would be for two people, two officers dedicated just to our parks and public lands. Right now, we have the contract with the city and they respond, but they have different priorities. They respond to, as you've heard, dogs in need or people being attacked by animals. They have all these different responses. So if we had a dedicated team with a truck that can deal with those issues, it would just be for our parks.
Yeah. And my question relates to the park rangers because I'm still a little confused about the job descriptions and the metrics that the park rangers are following. You put them on the slide that says reduce or eliminate crime and antisocial behavior in public spaces, which is fantastic. We all agree with that. You know, and I think something that we have talked, not in private, in public, you know, in these meetings, about one metrics, you know, how are the park rangers reducing and limiting crime, antisocial behaviors? How many of those cases, you know, what are they doing, you know, specifically? And one other, when this program was introduced last year, it was mentioned also to help curb the issue of dogs off leash and, you know, bad dog owners. So then, a year ago, it was sort of part of the general idea of park rangers. And now it seems like to be separating itself from the park rangers' overall goal.
Right. So the park rangers would work in, with the animal control because the park rangers can only ask people to put their dogs on leash and remind them of the rule and offer them a leash, and they do that quite frequently. And Carmen probably has some statistics.
I have the stats right here. So from January, February, and March, they had, we call them compliance conversations about dogs off leash. They had 366 of those conversations. When we had the elk issue at Parley's Nature Reserve, they went in there, they did a lot of public campaigning, please put your dog on a leash. And then when it got to kind of a core set of people that were not wanting to do that, then we called in animal services to help us out. Because it was a safety issue with the elk and the dogs off leash.
That makes sense. And you called the county, but what you, because the county is who.
We asked them to, yes, we do.
So, but you are asking for animal services crew, which it wouldn't be, they won't, it would be the county. So it will be for paying the county to have an extra team, two more people here in Salt Lake City. Okay, now I understand what you're, that was a long, okay. So you're asking us to fund two more people for a service the county provides?
This is not, these are not FTEs on our, within our city. It's an inter-local agreement to the county.
This would be contracted services with the county.
And just to clarify that a little bit more, that's dedicated to our public lands and parks. And right now, if our park rangers at Parley's are trying to enforce that, they would call the county, but the county's going to respond to the most urgent issue at the time. And so that could be someone's dog trapped in a car. They're responding to the entire city, not just our public spaces.
That makes sense. And there's a lot of dogs in the streets in my neighborhood, so I do appreciate that. So thank you. And I thank you for indulging me with this, the question. And as far as the park rangers go, if you guys have information, you know, when this is coming through the budget, that will be very useful.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Appreciate it. Any last questions, councilmembers? All right, let's move on to the next item, which is number eight, Police Department Crime Reduction Strategies.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I have one quick question.
For public lands?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Kristin, I apologize. But one of the things that I was curious about are, and I talked with HR a little bit about this earlier, this, a couple of months ago maybe, but maybe some of the barriers to getting people to apply for some of the seasonal positions, like for example, having a high school diploma. I don't know, like, if that is always necessary, right, for some of those positions? And I'm wondering if we're looking at, you know, are there barriers that we're kind of arbitrarily and accidentally creating that maybe we can eliminate and open up the pool to people who would want to apply but maybe feel intimidated because they didn't finish high school or something along those lines?
Right. That's not one of our requirements for being a ground maintenance tech. And I will tell you that I watched our office manager just the other day sit with four people who don't speak a lick of English and walk them through the application process. And it must have taken her two hours for these four people. And we ended up hiring those four people, which is so awesome, and we got them placed. But they came in and they were just looking for a position and I feel like we try, we bend over backwards to try to help people, whether they speak English or not. And these folks happen to speak Spanish and our office manager speaks Spanish as well. But we have hired people that we had to get an interpreter for because nobody in the office spoke their language and we did that. So we are really looking at ways we can limit those barriers and how we can attract more folks. And I just, I want to say thanks to council because last year in the budget season, we asked for a raise for our seasonals from $13.15 an hour with, at the minimum, to 17. And I think that's helped with returning people and also with recruitment. So that was really great as well.
That's awesome and so awesome to hear. I really, like, I love, I love that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to number eight, informational briefing on Police Department Crime Reduction Strategies. Who is introducing this item? Police Department?
The chief and the mayor unfortunately had some unexpected conflicts come up, so I'm here to cover for them. My name is Deputy Chief Morkus with the Police Department. We are here today to provide an update on the violent crime reduction strategy that we have put into place since last September. We have continued to see reductions in violent crime across the city in large part to the hard work of our officers as well as the strategic actions that we're taking with our partners here, who I will introduce with the University of Texas, San Antonio. They're going to provide an overview of what the plan, what our strategic plan is for violent crime reduction, as well as give an update on where we're at and what the next step is. So with that, we have Dr. Mike Smith and Dr. Rob Tillier.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, I guess, to everyone. Thank you for having us and giving us the opportunity to appear before you and provide you some updates on the Salt Lake City Violent Crime Plan and what the Police Department's been doing and what the results have been over about the last six months. So I'm Mike Smith, this is my colleague, Rob Tillier. So, next slide, please. So probably been a while since you maybe have thought about this or heard about it. So just by way of review, we became engaged with your city back last summer and developed a strategic plan to reduce violent crime, violent street crime. And we defined that to include three primary offense types. So murder, robbery, and non-family violence-related aggravated assault. So we began working with Salt Lake City and the Salt Lake City Police Department to develop the strategic plan and then put it into effect beginning in September of 2022, so last fall. The plan itself is a three-part strategy, a near-term, midterm, and a longer-term strategy. The near-term strategy is a sort of a modern 21st century hotspots policing strategy. I should say that all of these strategies are evidence-based, so grounded in a lot of literature, which is why they're part of our crime plan. So the near-term strategy is a hotspots policing strategy. Midterm strategy is a deeper dive into the, sort of the underlying problems that give rise to violence at persistently violent places. We call that problem-oriented, place-based policing. And then the longer-term strategy is a focused deterrent strategy that addresses prolific violent offenders. And so we are, we're about six months into the near-term strategy, about to begin the midterm strategy, and then we haven't gotten to focused deterrents yet. So, next slide, please. So the hotspots policing strategy began, as I mentioned, in September. The focus is on violence-prone addresses. So we analyze your crime data on a regular basis now, but we did, leading up to the implementation of the hotspot strategy in September, to identify locations in your city that, where these three offenses occur the most often. And those become the treated, the treatment areas for the upcoming treatment period, which is somewhere between 60 to 90 days. We redo this analysis every 60 to 90 days. Most of the hotspots drop off and then are replaced by ones that were the most prolific in the previous 60 days. So we have some, about seven, that we've treated more than once, but most of the hotspots that we've treated have only been treated one time. So that's the, that's essentially the strategy, that while the officers are there, they are instructed to be highly visible, which means they sit stationary in their patrol cars with all the lights, all the emergency equipment turned on for 15-minute intervals during peak crime hours and peak crime days of the week. We also do that analysis to identify when those sort of peak crime times are. That 15-minute period is meaningful. That's also research-based. So they'll sit there for 15 minutes, they could actually get dispatched there as a call, and then they'll go back and service and go about their business. So that's kind of how the strategy runs. The goal is to increase guardianship at these crime-prone locations and to deter, and to deter violence. Next slide, please. So you'll see some slides, this is just an outline of what's coming up here. One of the things that we track very carefully is what we call treatment fidelity. So are officers there where we want them to be, where they're scheduled to be, when they're scheduled, when we want them to be there? So we track that carefully, well, I'll show you that in a minute. And then you'll see some slides that we've looked at the impact of the strategy on crime citywide, at the treated areas themselves, at catchment areas. So these are essentially 1,000-foot buffer zones around each hotspot. We look for crime changes there to measure or gauge whether there's been any crime displacement. That's a common tactic or strategy among people like ourselves that track these kind of things. We look for displacement to see whether or not crime, has crime moved just kind of around the corner, for example? We typically don't see that and we haven't seen that systematically at all in Salt Lake City, but we look for it. So we also will show you some results by crime type, each of those three types I mentioned, as well as within the different patrol divisions in Salt Lake. Next slide, please. This is the, there's a lot going on there, but it's actually pretty simple. If you look at the second column from the left, that's the percent fidelity. So you'll see the numbers are in the, above the 90% in the 90s, high 90s in most cases. Those by period, period one, period two, period three. So what that tells us is that the officers were located where we wanted them to be, where they were scheduled to be in the first period, 98% of the time. And that's fantastic. That's, you know, we do this kind of work in a number of cities. Anything above 90% is great. Salt Lake City is well above 90%. So that's all good. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a longitudinal graph that shows you monthly counts of those violent crime incidents, starting back in September of 2021, all the way through March, the end of March of this year. And it just plots monthly crime counts. That red line there, that vertical red line, is the beginning of the crime plan. So that section of the line there to the right of the red bar is the treatment period. And monthly, average monthly violent crime count during the treatment period was about 16% lower than it was in the previous year. So it's headed in the direction. So it's headed in the direction that we would hope to see. And you'll see some variation, some of that is seasonal. So crime in cities like Salt Lake that have four seasons, crime typically goes up in the summertime and it goes down in the winter. So I'll have a slide in a minute that will show you actual period to period, but that's just a, just real big picture retrospective, what's crime been doing over, you know, the last year and a half. And the good news is that it's been going down by about 16%. Next slide, please. So this is that period, period to period slide that I mentioned. So this, what you're looking at here is crime during the treatment period, that's the September of 2022 to March of 2023 timeframe, compared to the same period a year before. So it kind of takes out those seasonal effects and compares period to period. And we show that in a number of different ways. Starting at the left-hand side of the screen, that shows you what crime has done citywide. So treatment period compared to a year before, crime's down about 11%. Within the treatment areas themselves, those hotspots where officers are sitting, crime's down about 12%. And in those catchment areas, where again, where we look for displacement, what we typically see is what you see here. Crime typically doesn't go up. What it usually does is it goes down slightly. And that's exactly what we've seen here in Salt Lake City during that six-month period, roughly. And then on the right-hand side are changes by individual crime type. So murder is flat compared to last year. Robbery of individuals is static as well. And then the right-hand slide shows, a right-hand portion of the slide shows you what's happened with business robberies. They're down about a third. Aggravated assaults, down about 19%. And gun-involved crimes significantly down, more than 70% down. So again, treatment period, the same time last year. All in the green, all in the negative, except for those two individual crimes, which are, which are flat. Next slide, please. This shows you treatment effects by division. So Pioneer, Central, Liberty, in the treatment areas and in the catchment areas. For the most part, crime is down in both treatment and catchment areas, up somewhat in the catchment areas in the central division, but down significantly in the treatment areas.
Can you define catchment area?
Yeah, that's the 1,000-foot buffer around each of the treated hotspots, where we look for displacement. So we actually, using mapping software, actually draw a buffer of about 1,000 feet, where you typically would see displacement if it were going to occur.
What's the word catchment used for?
That describes the area where crime may migrate to during the treatment period. That's a, that's a term of art that's typically used in this kind of work.
Okay, I don't understand the word.
It's the geographic space right around where we're treating, like the immediate 1,000-foot in any direction is the, is a catchment area. So if you think about like a bullseye, right, the center is the treatment location, and then like the next ring out, 1,000 feet, is the catchment area.
Next slide, please. This gives you an analysis of arrests. So what have arrests been doing during the treatment period compared to the same time last year? The green bars are your citywide figures, and the blue bars are within just the treatment locations themselves. So for the most part, citywide, crime is up a little bit. And citywide, about, by about 20%. Violent crime arrests are up slightly and so forth. The blue bars are the treatment locations. And you can see there where crime or arrests are up significantly in the treatment areas. So again, just to, just to give you a sense for what police activity is, what's happening there. By arrest type, violent arrests, disorder-related arrests, warrant arrests are up significantly, more than 250% in your treatment areas, drug arrests and weapons arrests.
Councilmember Doogie?
Thank you. I just want to, just to highlight the, your note, it says the percentages are based on a very low arrest count.
Yes.
And when we have those high, low counts with a high percentage, do we have the actual, the harder numbers? Did it go from two to three or did it go from?
We do.
Yeah, yes.
And thank you for pointing that out. I should have mentioned it. In some of these slides where you're dealing with low counts, yeah, if you go from, you know, one to four, you've got a, you've got a large percentage change. The actual count is not that large. You know, we can, we can, if you're listening in the figures right this second, we can probably pull them up.
Not right this second, but that's overall, because I always want to make sure that when, when my residents read some things, when something goes up really high or goes down really high, it's like, well, sometimes the count is, the issue not.
Yeah. And that's exactly right in this case. That's why we put that little red flag there on the, on the chart, but thank you for pointing it out.
Yeah, if we could get the hard count on some of those figure issues, thank you.
Sure.
I can give you one example if you want, just for context. Yeah, so let's look at, so weapons arrests on the far right-hand side, the 150% increase in the treatment areas. So that went from an average of two per month to an average of five per month. And that gives you that substantial percentage increase. And that's why we labeled it because of the inconsistency you get with small numbers.
Yeah, and that's where sometimes it's just nice, even with its percentages, here's, here's the hard numbers.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, we've experimented a number of ways over time about showing that, and they, the slides get pretty busy, but yeah, but thank you for pointing that out.
Just a quick question. I see that, and I haven't gone through all your presentation just yet, but I saw so far that you're comparing last year to this year.
This particular slide.
Excuse me?
This particular slide, that's right.
Okay, and the previous one, or the ones, the couple ones previous also were comparing a year's worth of data. Now, one could say that the last couple years were not normal. So, you know, and using them as baselines, to be also fair, the crime was kind of crazy during the pandemic and whatnot. I mean, many of the issues in crimes, all this, you know, violence in the home and things like that were skyrocketing across the nation for obvious reasons, now we know. But has your study gone a little past a year and gone through like what we call the normal times two, three years ago?
So the first slide shows you, gives you the retrospective, starting back in 2021, the year and a half, basically, up until the end of the treat, this most current treatment period. When we, when we first began to work with you all and began to look at your crime data over time, we actually went back three years from, from when we would have done that analysis. So we would have gone back to about 2018. I don't have that slide here today. But we looked at your, one of the reasons that we, I think we got engaged with you all is that you had a pretty linear trend of increasing crime going back to 2018. So that's pre-pandemic. And it wasn't, it wasn't a super, as I recall, it wasn't a super steep increase, but it was a 13% or 14% increase, I think, over that three-year period before the crime plan began.
Okay. And I ask these questions because, you know, many, many neighbors will tell me everything is on flames, right? And I get it, right? Like I live a couple blocks from North Temple, so, you know, from one of these hot, one of the hotspots, you know, that we are talking about here. And there is also the perception of crime, you know, that is, you know, is out there, and I don't know how we measure that, but I believe the social media and all of these things do play, you know, a role in how we perceive crime and the visibility of the crime related to, you know, you know, again, to the social media and how we see it. But it is encouraging to see that some of this, some of these things you're doing, and I see it all the time, and I talk to the chief about the lights on the, on the police cars and, you know, they seem to be having an effect. But I would like to see a little past this last year, a little more in this, in these examples, to see if there is more. We are on the same side of the issue. We want to solve this. Everybody agrees that crime shouldn't be a thing that we want to allow in the city, and we don't allow it in the city. We're just, we're just trying to curb it. And so a little more data will be helpful, but this is encouraging. Thank you for answering the questions.
We weren't provided a copy of the slide deck. Can you tell me how many more slides are in your presentation?
Three or four, probably.
Okay, great.
Next slide, please. So this is just a graph showing calls for service, the same, same sort of color scheme that we saw before. Green is citywide, blue is treatment areas. Left-hand bars are total calls for service, right-hand bars are violence-related. So focusing on those, given that this is a violent crime reduction plan, 13% down citywide, 35% down in the treated areas, which is, again, encouraging what we would hope to see with a, with a treatment of this type during the treatment period itself compared to, compared to, again, last year. Next slide. So that's just a summary slide, 16% reduction citywide. We, you know, in the initial time, I'll skip through that slide. We've gone through all those figures up to now, anyway. Next slide, please. Thank you. This kind of tells you where we're going next. The midterm strategy is, is our problem-oriented, place-based policing strategy. We've been in town, we were in town last week, did some training for your department heads on what this strategy is about. It is a strategy that's also place-based, again, designed to address the underlying conditions that the proximate causes, if you will, of recurring problems at crime-prone locations. It is a sort of a multidisciplinary approach, hence why the other department heads were involved. They named a member of their organization to serve on a working group that we were, we were here yesterday training that working group. That group will begin to meet, bring in all of the information and data that each of the organizations have on a particular, on particular hotspots, and then see if they can begin to diagnose, to get at what are those underlying problems, and then hopefully come up with creative solutions to address them. Those solutions are often not police-driven, because the problems, a lot of the problems, the proximate causes of these problems are not necessarily something that's within the control of the police. Hence why the multidisciplinary approach. So that strategy is sort of just getting underway now. We did the training, we were in town to do the training last week and this week. And then that group will, that interdisciplinary group will begin to meet from here on. Next slide, please. So that'll give you a sense of the timeline for that midterm strategy. The group will meet roughly this month and next. Hopefully, through the process that, that is built, sort of built, built into the strategy, begin to identify what those problems are, generate solutions. Each site is different, that's important. The plans are tailor-made, because every problem, or every, every site is different and requires a different set of solutions. And so the plan, the, the group, or the working group will develop these site-specific plans. They'll bring those plans back to the agency heads, what we call the advisory board, to review those plans, weigh in, provide suggestions or adjustments as needed, and then hopefully approve the final product. And that, those strategies will begin to be implemented in the, in the initial location itself. And then our, our work will, as the evaluators of that, of that portion of the strategy will continue in the months that follow. Next slide, please. And, and that's this. So as the new, as the midterm strategy gets underway, hotspots policing doesn't stop. It continues. This is a layered plan, it's designed to be that way. So hotspots policing will continue, our evaluation of period-to-period change will continue, and then we will just layer on the, the evaluation of the, of the, of the place-based strategy itself over the next, over the next six to 12 to 24 months. And that's, that's the end of the slide deck.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers?
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Valdemar Ross.
So as you review the statistics and look at all the calls and all the aggregate, which is pretty impressive, I was wondering if you guys also are looking into the amount of staff, or basically the amount of officers that are responding to each of the calls, and if, whether the amount is sufficient because, because it's showing like good results, and what's that amount? And/or maybe it's overkill, and we can use those same officers to go respond to other type of crimes that, or other type of issues that might need help? Because I think sometimes it looks really good, but sometimes we do see, I see in the streets, a lot of police officers, and I, and I don't know what's happening, so I can make passive judgment of what's happening, but, but I hear from people and I see it myself, why do you have these many police officers? And for us, as a budget perspective, I'm thinking, okay, was that enough? Is that overkill? And can we use these resources in also going to, you know, tackle another problem that we might be having in this, in the city in terms of crime? So that's the one question. And then the second question is, maybe I misunderstood your last slide about other ways of policing? And if you're looking at other ways of people-based policing, is that what you call it? I'm sorry, the slide is, is out of the.
The midterm strategy is actually a place-based strategy. So it's not person-based, but it's based on, in your persistently violent places.
Okay.
And trying to really understand what's causing that, why, why they continue to be violent places, and generate calls for service over and over again, and then try to address those underlying conditions.
Okay.
Rather than simply being there with your lights on to deter crime.
Okay. Sorry, I was just thinking about other alternative response models that we have implemented in the city to kind of lower the workload of our police department. So anyway, but going back to my question about the amount of staff, are we, do we have sufficient? Is it overkill? Do we need more? Can we use our officers as resources for taking care of other types of crimes? Thank you.
Yeah, so a couple, thank you for the question. A couple of things. It's, our role is not to, to do a staffing study or to weigh in on, on the size of the Salt Lake City Police Department, or whether it's too, you know, sufficient or insufficient. I'm sure Deputy Chief Morkus could have, could speak to that much more cogently than, than we do, or could, because we're, that's, we're just not involved in that. In terms of the strategy itself, though, I will tell you that this, this, this has been a hotspot strategy report, if you will. That strategy is purposely designed to be a very light footprint strategy. So officers are sitting there with their lights on in their cars for 15 minutes at a time, only during peak crime hours and peak crime days of the week. So they're not there all the time. It's purposely designed not to be an overpolicing strategy or some sort of dragnet approach or, or stop and frisk. It's, it's none of that. It's a very light footprint strategy that, that, there's a lot of evidence shows can have, can have really good effects. And so I think we're beginning to see some of that emerge here in Salt Lake City.
I can speak to the personnel issue, if you'd like, very quickly. When it comes to a staffing issue, these hotspot patrol dispatch, dispatches are typically one officer, the vast majority of the time. Now, there might be a certain location where somebody wants a backing officer, and that's fine, they're allowed to do that, but I would say 95-plus percent, if not more, is just one, one officer. So we're not taking significant amount of extra resources from the field. That being said, we are adding a substantial amount of work to our officers to address violent street crime in these locations where it is congregated. So we are actually adding to our officers' workload by engaging in this strategy in, with the idea of if we can reduce crime in that area, it actually results in less calls for service, less victimization. So it's really an investment in trying to reduce the manpower or person power needed there in those locations. I think we also have to keep in mind two things. You know, our, thanks in large part to the leadership at our, in our patrol staffing, leadership in our patrol ranks, our response times are still very, very low compared to where they have been historically. The last ones I just saw is under 10 minutes, again, on the average response time. That has, speaks volumes of our officers and how hard they work. And I think we also have to remember, as we're coming into this busy season for us, we talked about seasonality, the summer is the busiest time for us, we're, we're still mandating overtime right now. So when we're talking about resources and how many people we need to make sure that we're still providing the levels of service that people expect and that we need to provide to the community, we are doing mandatory overtime to reach those levels. And at the same time, we're employing this strategy, again, adding to our officers with the investment of lowering crime in these areas in the long run.
Can I just add quickly to that, too? And that the results that we have show that violent calls for service are down 35% in the places where officers are at. So to, to the deputy chief's point, like, we're, you know, there's officers going to those places, and in fact, that is generating less demand for police resources, particularly in the types of calls that we're trying, and the types of activities we're trying to interrupt.
Mr. Chair, very quickly.
Okay, yeah, quickly, we have three more items and close session.
I will be very quick. I, I see that the treatment seems to be having an effect. I, my, my question is, what is the long-term? Because I don't know if this treatment is effective after, I don't know, maybe there is that, but I, just doing a quick research, you know, this is not a new strategy. You know, DC has been doing this, and, you know, 15 years ago, some other jurisdictions started doing it a couple of years ago. So, will these lights on 15 minutes at a time in this hotspot solve the, the issue in the, in those hotspots long-term? I mean, solving it right then, which is great, is a goal, but what are the next steps to move this great first step into something long-term?
Yeah, so, great question, and, and no, it won't solve your problems all by itself. That's why we have a, we have a three-pronged strategy, and that midterm strategy that I, I just mentioned that we're about to get underway with, is actually designed to hopefully address those, the underlying conditions at some of those places, so that hopefully they won't be hotspots anymore, that's the goal. And so, it is very much a layered plan, recognizing that one of these strategies by itself is not going to, is not going to, you know, solve the violent crime problem in Salt Lake or any city by itself. It is, it is one piece of the, of the, of the puzzle, but it's, it's insufficient by itself to, 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 you know, to deal with your persistently violent places. They've been that way for a long time, and that, and simply putting, an officer there will suppress crime, and we've seen that, and we see that repeatedly in the literature, but it's not going to solve the problem long-term.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is an economic development revolving loan fund for Trackland LLC. Allison Roland, looks like Will and Roberta are here to present on this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is a proposed loan for Trackland LLC. It would be a $350,000 loan at 11% interest over seven years, and it would be used for working capital and hiring. It would create 20 new jobs in the next year and retain eight jobs that are currently existing. So I will turn it over to Roberta and Will.
Thank you, Allison. Just real quickly, it's great to be with you, council members. We're, we're excited to present to you Trackland. I think you'll notice, that is not your typical loan that we've brought before you. This is our first tech company that we've seen come through since we've had the program. And, and that's because, you know, we've, we've struggled to find, to have this be a good fit for tech companies. Normally, they need different types of financing. So this is one that kind of was this niche of application that we found, and that we are able to, to get through to the loan committee. So, I'll pass it over to Will to, to, to present.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, council members. We're really pleased to present this loan request on behalf of Trackland. Allison and Roberta both did really excellent job of summarizing, so I would be happy to answer any of your questions at this time.
Councilors, do you have any questions on this loan fund?
Yeah, I think I sent out a couple of questions to Allison earlier about just the, the employees.
Yes.
And then being the remote workers, but also the projection of the vision of the, the company finding a place, more permanent house instead of permanent location vice in the R1 areas. Could you kind of address that again?
Sure. Actually, I'll defer to Will, since he'll probably get it correct. I sent you an email about 10:15, you probably saw it.
Yeah, could you just kind of?
Yeah, happy to, and that's a great question. So, two of the eight employees are locally based, and as they grow, the growth plan is to expand in Sugar House, they have deep roots in Sugar House. They're going to recruit from the University of Utah, Westminster College, and Salt Lake Community College, look to hire young graduates to fill out their marketing and sales positions. And the plan is very much focused on growth within the Sugar House area.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. We...
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, I think we're moving on. Before we jump to item 10, are the board appointees here, I don't want to make them wait any longer, I see Ross, John, Madeline, and Annie? Let's go ahead and... Let's go ahead and jump to this item, so that we don't make you wait any longer. This one. Great, we are interviewing board appointees for the Sister Cities Board. Looks like we have three people here, and we may have one joining us later, and we can come back to them at that point. But we are excited that the Sister Cities program is up and running again and becoming more active. We're excited for the delegation from Matsumoto to come later this year, and excited to have some new members of the board. So, why don't we just start with Ross and go down the line? If you'll just introduce yourself. Tell us what country, if there's a particular country that, or a city that you will be facilitating the, the partnership with, and then what your history is with that, that city.
Sure, sure. My name is Ross Chamblyss, I just wanted to thank the council, just for, for the opportunity to interview for this position. My interest is with the relationship with Matsumoto, Japan. It's just, it's a relationship I've, I feel like I've been involved with since I was probably four or five years old. My father, when he worked for Mayor Ted Wilson's administration, started opening up our house to host visitors from Japan, and ever since then, it was, it kind of became almost an annual ritual. So, through that, we, we developed a lot of friendships over there. I was fortunate to have the opportunity to live there for four years as an English teacher between 2003 and 2007, was able to just make a lot of good friendships during that time as well. I was also able to meet the person who eventually I would get married to, and so we live here now, together, we're raising two. My wife, Ikwe, my partner, unfortunately can't be here now, she's actually working, she's at work at the hospital, she's a nurse. But we're raising two daughters together here in Salt Lake, which is our home now, but we still have close ties to our sister city. You know, I basically married into this relationship, so, pretty committed to it. We're actually planning to go there next month. It's been about five years since COVID, to be able to go back and visit friends there. Very excited for the delegation coming later this summer, and I think there's a lot of great opportunities with this relationship to advance it further, after 65 years of friendship for our city. And I think the Sister City program generally has a lot of, is very valuable for our city in lots of different ways, but I'll, I'll end there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Councilors, any questions for us? Councilor DeGronk?
Thank you very much, Ross, for representing the city and the district on this, and love your passion for it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in some ways, you guys have become some sort of ambassadors for, for this city. And, you know, last year, we, we were talking about, follow the invasion of Ukraine, you know, Wacherniewski, our sister city in Ukraine, and we realized about the program being San Badet, you know, the Sister City program. So it's, it's fantastic to see it come back to life, and all of your energy and passion to make our city and those connections keep alive, so, thank you.
All right.
Hello, my name's Annie Kwan.
Hi, Annie.
And, you know, I don't really have a particular city necessarily that, but I rem, to be completely honest, I had completely forgotten about the Sister City program, and then when this program came up, and just a casual conversation, it just flooded with all these memories. I grew up here in Salt Lake, and I remember doing the PENPAO program when I was in elementary school with the Sister City. And as an adult, I had completely forgotten about it, and if you can imagine growing up here in the 80s, not to age myself here, but it was a very, very white, so to be able to have this penmanship with this sister city in Japan, it was amazing, and it just blew my mind, and I just had so much fun with it. And so, when I was presented with this amazing opportunity, I just felt like I, as a steward of this community, it'd be such a great opportunity to represent Salt Lake and be able to add on to this program. So, thanks for having me.
Wow, it's incredible, the years of history that both of you have with this program, so, thank you. Council members, any other questions for Annie? All right.
My name is Joan Wilson. I have kind of a unique background to the Sister City program also. I'm not here to represent a particular city. My grandmother was actually the very first president of the International Sister City program. And, so I grew up in the Sister City program, she was appointed by Eisenhower, and, and I've just always loved the, the idea behind it. And unfortunately, my father's passed away, but I'm grateful I have the opportunity to continue on in, in her spirit, and to be able to, again, exemplify the, the spirit of togetherness that I think Sister City talks about. You know, it's, it's people to people, and that's what it's really all about, so. And again, I actually live in District 3, so, I live up in the avenues, and just, I love the city, and, yeah, so that's me.
Wonderful. Councilors, any questions for John? Thank you so much, and may I guess Madeline?
Yeah, I'm Madeline Mortensen. I grew up in Salt Lake County, and I went to school at Utah State, so I lived in Logan for a while. And this is my first time living in Salt Lake City, and it seemed like very fun to live in the capital, capital city. Councilwoman Valdemaros is my representative, I signed up for her newsletter, and that's where I found out about it. I had been looking for a way to like, get more, I was looking for a way to like, get more involved and to volunteer, and I just have like, a deep love of travel, a deep love of people and places, and so the idea of getting to participate in something that would help like, my, my city connect with people in other places on a city, to civil, city level, was very exciting to me, and seemed like a really great way to get involved.
Well, thank you so much for your willingness to serve the city. Council members, any questions for Madeline?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to Madeline and all of you guys. This is an exciting program, I'm excited that we're reviving it a little bit. I think, I think it's one of the funnest things that you can do, I think, for the city, and, and thank you for being our ambassadors, our representatives. Hopefully, we can support you as council, as you come up with ideas, and, you know, and the other sister cities, and all the things, how we can collaborate. I know there's a lot of fraternal love, or I'm not sure if that's the, the name of the thing, but we had our delegation from Peru not too long ago, and we were able to collaborate and help those that were in need in our sister city. So I'm excited to hear from you guys, to see what else we can do, and become even closer, so, thank you.
There is something to highlight, though, someone reads our newsletters, so.
Thank you.
That's, and signs up for them, thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman Wharton.
I just wanted, this is really cool to have, like, people with, like, such personal stories to add, so, to the three of you, thanks so much. And to you, it's very cool that you just came to Salt Lake, and that you're ready to jump in with, with a board in commission, and we're really glad to have you, and I hope, I wish every resident did that when they came to our city, but we're really glad to have your enthusiasm. Thanks to all of you.
So, as a matter of procedure, you'll be confirmed during our consent agenda. That happens at the end of the meeting, you don't need to attend our meeting tonight, and no news is good news. Thank you for being willing to serve the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move backwards. There's an informational briefing that is written about renaming the airport greeting room for Senator Jake Garn. There's another written briefing about our memorandum for the 2023 election services, which is our agreement with the county to provide our services for our ranked choice voting election this year. And then we, our last discussion will be item number 10 on our agenda, which is a extension of the mayor's local emergency declaration for the state of flooding. And I think it's Katie Lewis that is going to talk us through what our role is in this. And Laura Briefer is on, Director Briefer is online.
Hello, council members. We are here today to discuss extending the declaration of local emergency that Mayor Aaron Mendenhall issued on April 12th, 2023, related to flooding and warming temperatures related to higher-than-normal levels of snowpack. As you may recall, because we have been through this process of extending local emergencies before, that the mayor has the authority to declare a local emergency and issue related orders, and that local emergency remains in effect for 30 days. After that, the council has the authority to extend that local emergency for any time that it deems appropriate. Any of the orders that the mayor has issued during that time would remain in effect during that time. My understanding is that there are not any orders currently in effect. There were some related to voluntary evacuation, related to the flooding at Wasatch Hollow, but those are not in effect anymore. So right now, the declaration of local emergency is really in preparation for any flooding that may occur, so that the, the city can issue orders and help citizens if those, if those floods occur. And I will turn it over to Director Briefer. You will see that the extension in your packet, the date is blank, and she can speak to projected snowpack and flooding, and what date might be appropriate if the council decides to extend it.
Director Briefer?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, so, my recommendation, based on examining the forecast, the most recent forecasts that we have from the National Weather Service Colorado Basin River Forecast Center, plus some of the information we've been gathering with field visits into the watersheds, is it would be appropriate anytime between June 15th and June 30th. Many of our streams are forecasted to peak at the end, or the beginning of June, end of May. Little Cottonwood and Big Cottonwood Stream, while not in Salt Lake City, has a little bit of a later peak, and potentially a larger impact, and in particular, potential impact to Salt Lake City's water infrastructure, such as the Big Cottonwood Water Treatment Plant, which we are currently trying to harden ahead of those expected flows. So, that's my recommendation, based on the existing data. I think June 15th or June 30, 30th, somewhere around there, would be just, just fine.
Katie, there was a time when we extended local emergencies, seemed like every week, and I felt like we all understood the laws surrounding that very well, but isn't there some guardrails as to how short or how long that extension can be? Or can, are we open to extending it for whatever period we want to?
You are open to extend it for whatever period you think is appropriate. The initial 30 days is the, the only limitation under Utah law and city code.
Okay, so I guess, councilman, and this is, we need to do this today, right?
That's correct.
In order for it to not expire?
Yeah, unless you wanted to wait until the 9th, because it goes until the 12th, but you don't have a formal meeting on the 9th, which is why we scheduled it today.
Right, that makes sense.
I would just say, throw it out there, one July, the 1st of July, I just, yeah.
That is outside of Laura's window.
Or 30 June, or 30 June, 30 June. I was just going to go the end of the June, 30 June, because I think she...
I'm fine with that. Council members, anyone disagree?
Fine.
Okay. And that sounds like we're, we're happy to extend it till the end of June, beginning of July. So, we'll get some language in our motion sheet, I assume?
Yes, that sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have some, there's no report from the chair, vice chair, but I do think we have some reports, and then we do have a closed session on a couple topics.
Just a quick announcement, that in keeping with past practice, we will shift the delivery of the council materials, the agenda and staff reports and background information to Friday instead of Thursday. That'll give us a little more time during this condensed, intense time, budget time. And then, the last item is inland port travel. Councilmember Petro has been included in an upcoming bit of travel that the port, inland port board is undertaking. They are going to look at rail sites and other best practices in Germany. The group will also join part of a trade mission that Governor Cox is leading. The inland port is, is willing to cover the costs for all of the board members, but the city has a longstanding policy that if it's something that will benefit the city taxpayers, it's more appropriate to have it funded by the city than to have an outside organization, because it preserves independence and objectivity. because it preserves independence and objectivity. So the city attorney's office had, has advised that, that in order to avoid having it appear like a gift or something like that, it should be paid by the city if someone make, travels.
So we need to give direction on whether the council supports that. All right. Anyone have questions on, on the, what we're being asked? Personally, I think we need a representative to be there so that those decisions are made. There's a reason why we have a seat on the board, even though it's not a voting seat, and I think that a lot of decisions may be made on this trip. So personally, I think that it's important that we have a representative there.
And, and hopefully, they won't actually make decisions, but there will be.
Right.
A great deal of discussion.
Discussion will be made and that discussion.
Seeing things firsthand. And if you haven't been in those.
Information will be gathered.
Yeah, and if you.
And learned and relationships created. And I think we need a city representative to be there personally. Anyone disagree?
No.
I hesitate for the trip, but I think you're right about having someone there, at least being the eyes on the ground, while, eyes and ears on the ground during these discussions so we have a sense of what they're discussing and looking at. So I agree, sometimes I go, hmm, do we really need to go outside the country to do something that we could probably do inside the country? But I also think we need to be in the position to understand what they're thinking.
Yeah, and I would think if, because to the extent that the inland port authority has already chosen that they are going to have this trip, I feel like we have no choice but to make sure our city, our city.
Is represented.
Is represented in those conversations.
Mr. Chair, and I think.
But whether that trip needed to be in Germany or if there was a port closer by is not a question that was presented to us.
No, I think it's essential that Councilmember Petro goes because it's not only for her to listen about other ports and things, but also for her input, like direct input right then, right there, as she gets to see how other countries do inland ports and, and all the innovations out there. So I think it's, I'm comfortable with this, that she goes there and is there where the conversations are happening. So, thanks.
I understand the concern too about the, like, I guess, the international travel in terms of cost, but when it comes to like ideas about making the port more environmentally sustainable and I actually think it's probably better to look to European models. So I think that, I wish the cost wasn't there, but I don't, I don't have a concern about it.
But actually, I mean, I have other concerns about the inland port and some of the things in the contract that's separate from this discussion.
Sure, yes. And I, I think that to the extent that, I think what, my feeling is to the extent that we don't participate in this as, we don't have a representative in the city, then our goals or our concerns related to that big issue will not be represented. Right. Okay, sounds like.
Appreciate that.
That's a yes. All right, council members, I'm looking for a motion to enter closed session for the purposes of strategy sessions to discuss collective bargaining, strategy sessions to discuss purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, and attorney client matters.
So move, move.
I have a motion from Councilmember Pui and a second from Councilmember Wharton. Any discussion? I'll roll call Councilmember Pui.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wharton.
Yes.
Valdemoros.
Yes.
Dugan.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Petro absent. Oh, Councilmember Petro, she's.
She's absent.
She's absent, okay. Great, we are moving into closed session. This will conclude our work session and we will reconvene at or around 7:00 PM for our formal session.